Welcome to the Falmouth Chamber of Commerce.
The Falmouth Chamber is dedicated to working on behalf of our members to make Falmouth a better place to live, work, and conduct business. We are committed to developing the economic, cultural, educational, and civic interests of our community and welcome the support from all our organizations to achieve our combined goals. Whether you call Falmouth home, are a summer resident, or a visitor, we hope you take advantage of all that the Chamber has to offer.
Hi, I'm Bob from Crane Appliance. Since 1983, as a family-owned company, our goal has been simple: to give our neighbors of the Cape and Islands a great shopping experience. Rest easy knowing our professional team will listen to your needs and help you pick out the perfect appliances. We'll take care of everything throughout the sale, delivery, and installation process. And we even have our own in-house service department. Crane Appliance, we call the Cape and Islands home.
Carlson Printing for all your printing needs. 508-548-7303, or toll-free at 1-800-696-7303. Our email address is carsonprinting@aul.com. Carlson Printing for all your printing needs.
Hosting services for FCTV.org are provided by Meganet Communications. Meganet offers a wide array of internet services, including MegaBackup Cloud Service, Server Colocation, T1, Fiber, Metro Ethernet, as well as telephone services such as Hosted PBX and Digital Voice. Their number-one goal is to keep your communications network up and running and allow you to focus on growing your business. 877-634-2638, or meganet.net.
So I have nothing to bang, but I would like to call to order.
Eileen, we're starting.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, usually she... Okay. I'd like to call to order. The workshop meeting of the Falmouth Select Board for Saturday, August 27, 2022. It is now nine o'clock. And just as a note, this is a workshop meeting, and there will be no public comment. So I'd like to kick this off by just reminding people of what the task was. And the task for this meeting was to create five strategic priorities that are your own to bring to the board, to then let us go through them and consider what we're going to consider for this strategic plan as we work through the process of rewriting it. And so each of you were tasked with that, and I ask that you do them as goals that are specific, measurable, attainable, relevant, and connected to some kind of a timeline. And that timeline can be just about anything, but it should be earmarked so that we know what we're looking at in terms of time, which would then impact budget. So I apologize for my voice. What I'd like to do is I'd like to start with Anjalee Scott Price, and I would like her to speak to her priorities, along with making an emphasis on what's new. What in your priorities is new and that you feel has not been addressed in the current strategic plan? So I'll start with you.
Thank you, Chair Taylor. So the first of my goals was managing the affordable housing crisis, which there is some discussion of that in the current strategic plan, but I think we need to make some radical changes. We're in dire need of affordable housing, and we're just, we're at a breaking point. And so I think we need to focus more specifically on managing that crisis. We need to increase our housing stock for both ownership and rentals to match the need. There's a lot of discussion about getting to the 10%, so we don't have to deal with 40Bs and all that, which is a good starting goal, but I think we need to go beyond that. There are other municipalities and communities throughout the Commonwealth and elsewhere in the United States that have done decent work, and I think that we should spend some time researching and learning from what they're doing in those communities, what can be done here. Obviously, we have our own challenges, because being here on the Cape, we have the, we need to keep in mind coastal resilience, which is one of my other items. We need to keep in mind wastewater management and the lack of new land that we can acquire, those kinds of things. But I think there are other places that we can look for, to see how they've been successful. And then I have some ideas or some radical options, because like I said, I think we are at the point where we need radically different things to change the trajectory that we're on. Perhaps an Airbnb moratorium, tax benefits to property owners who rent long-term, revisiting the ADU bylaw, that one specifically. I know the Housing Assistance Corporation went through some policy work where they looked at ADUs and went through step-by-step process of how it gets done and put that into some sort of report. And so I'd like to spend some time looking at that, seeing if there's some changes we need to implement to get more people to use the ADU bylaw. Part of that, I think, comes with changing minimum lot size requirements for the town. I think, I just, I realize that is a really big task, and that requires more than just four, but something I'd like to explore. And supporting unconventional housing options such as tiny homes or something similar. Those can be fun. When I think about on the Vineyard, there is the gingerbread houses, and those are obviously historic, but very cute. People go to the Vineyard just to visit those. Maybe that's something that we could do here in Falmouth, is have a small community of tiny homes that could be at some little community within our community. Just radical options that I would like for us to explore. So that's the affordable housing timeline, really immediately. I think it needs to be a top priority, because when we start getting into all of these other things that I'll mention, I think affordable housing, it's one of the, one of the crutches to making sure that we're able to get through some of these other things. Managing the opioid and addiction crisis. So that is listed in the strategic plan, is working with the police department and the fire department, but I think there needs to be more specific action on that. I put here, reduce the number of overdose deaths to zero. I realize that is a stretch goal, but I think that's a goal that we should aim for, we should reach for. We have talked about having clinicians or some sort of staff for the police department and for the fire department, and that is in the strategic plan, but I think we need to, as we're looking at the budget this year, really consider that as we move forward. We need to learn the root cause of addiction. And again, this is where I go back to affordable housing. We had somebody come to our board meeting on Monday and say that they've lived here for less than 18 months and have moved five times. And that amount of stress, I can't imagine what that does to a person, to a family. And so I would be really interested in knowing if the root cause of some of the concerns and addictions we have in our community is because people don't have stable housing. I could be way off base, but we don't know until we do the research. I know there's a lot of other factors that go into addiction, but I do wonder if, if that's a factor. And we need to increase funding to life-saving services. So when the Health and Human Services Committee came in and the question was asked, "Would you like more money?" I think they're very cautious to not just say like, "Yes, give us more money." But I do think that we need to revisit the services that they offer, and specifically the Health and Human Services Department. But recommendations from them and the committee on what services they need to save people's lives and to reduce our overdoses to zero. Prepare our coasts and waterways for climate change, coastal resilience. So again, I think this touches back to affordable housing, because as we're thinking about where we want to build affordable housing, where we want to retrofit buildings for affordable housing, or any other municipal use, or any other uses, we need to keep in, in mind coastal resilience. I did go through the coastal resiliency final report, and there's a lot of really good information in that, and there's a lot of specific policies. So when we get to specifically talking about coastal resilience, I did highlight several policies that I think that we could take quick and easy action on to help manage our coasts for what's coming. I have decreased pollution to waterways, water and wastewater management. So continue to prioritize areas of Falmouth in most need of sewer connections and continue to pursue funding on those, which I know we are, we are doing and that is in the previous strategic plan. But I also want to identify other options for minimizing pollution to waterways. So something that was mentioned was the recycling, the urine recycling that Hilda and her group are working on, trying to let people know about. I think that's a way that we could encourage people to do those things who are not in areas that are priority for searing, because it will help, every little bit helps. We can look at ways that the town can incentivize that. I haven't come up with any specific ideas. We should encourage and incentivize composting as well, keep things out of the trash, keep things out of the sewer. People use their garbage disposals less, less, less that goes into our wastewater management, those kinds of things. I do realize I forgot to put a timeline on a couple of these. So I think that in the next, the next strategic plan that goes out to 2027, we should have something in there about unconventional wastewater management for homes and small businesses. And the last thing I have is increase diversity, equity, and inclusion throughout the town departments. And this one, I think, is an overarching goal. We obviously want to hire a DEI officer, and the important thing is to implement the recommendations into the work that we do in the town. That's into our policy updates and changes, new policies. I would like to have that person at future strategic planning sessions, so that as we're thinking about what our strategies are, we have, we're able to look at that through a DEI lens. And hiring and retention of town employees, I think, is also somewhere that a DEI officer could really tell us where we could be doing better as far as implementing our goals. So one thing I didn't list on here is also having this person help us come up with what a goal is for the town. What do we actually want when we say we want to increase diversity, equity, inclusion? Does that mean we want just more people of color on staff? I mean, we want more people who identify as non-binary or transgender? Does that mean that we want people who just come from different socioeconomic backgrounds and people who live in Falmouth now? So what do we say when we want more diversity? What do we say we want equity? And how do we become more inclusive? And I would like to see that, I would like to see the DEI officer hired in the next six to eight months, preferably, and then starting to work on these recommendations shortly after that.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
No, but I like the fact that you're picking up on that urine diverting idea, because especially in our areas that are not going to be sewered, because that's really all that's going to be ever happening out there. So if we can find out the most economical and affordable way to take that load off of those ponds and rivers, we should do it.
So I've actually been out to the Ark where Earl and Hilda live, and they have composting toilets and things like that. And so I know that it is doable in Falmouth. They have, they have figured it out. And it's not without its challenges. It goes back to the equity pieces. If, if it's something that we want people to do, and not everyone can afford to retrofit their home or their toilets or whatever, that's where the, we might want to consider where the town would step in. We also might want to consider, as we're building, more affordable housing or retrofitting buildings, if that's something that we want to be inclusive on, are we going to put that cost on the builder or onto the future homeowners or renters? So this is a kind of things that I was saying, the affordable housing, I think, really touches on a lot of these different points.
I will say that the town incentivized composting toilets with $5,000, plus an offer not to have to pay to hook up to the sewer. And I personally, as a contractor, drove around to about 25 or 30 houses and scoped out whether or not we could run a tube from the second floor down to the basement.
Yeah.
Some houses would need a bump out to house the unit. And in the end, I think only 10 or 12 people chose to do it, and two of those ended up taking it back out because they just weren't comfortable with it.
I didn't realize it was that many. I thought there were no takers.
I agree. I don't think that many kept them.
I'm pretty sure there was 10, 10 that did it.
Maybe expressed interest, but there weren't that many takers.
Okay. Well, the point is that there was very few
Yeah.
Yeah.
In a huge sewer area that had a chance to take advantage of an offer.
Nearly 1,500 homes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And only, less than five took it seriously.
Well, and so two of them ended up taking it out, which is even more telling.
Yes.
Right.
So if we're going to try to not force it on them, but if we're going to make this happen, it has to be super user-friendly with a flushable toilet with urine diversion. And I, I know that they're out of the market. There's a Swedish one that I was looking up, but not quite ready for primetime, but I think we need to keep an eye on it. And whenever it's really viable, we find a plan to make it happen.
Yeah. So I think it's something that we should keep, keep in mind.
Is anyone else called?
Always in here.
That's why I brought my sweater. Me.
That's why I wore like long pants, otherwise I'd be in shorts.
Okay. Any other questions?
I had to leave the sandals at home because I didn't want my toes to freeze.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you.
No, but I appreciate you learning, I mean, you're reminding us about these social issues, because mine's mostly all about money.
Money is important, but it's no good if nobody lives here.
That's true.
Mr. Zalinski, you're up next.
Oh, being that this is my first shot at, this is my first bite at the apple. Mine's a little more basic than our vice chair. I'm a firm believer in getting, you know, getting back to a baseline of service enhancements that, that, being, most of mine are timeline immediate. So I'll start off with, I'm a big supporter and advocate of health and public safety. I think it's paramount. And my first goal is to support public safety officials in departments. And that goes with building staff and capacity to meet added workloads and demands that change day to day, season to season. Provide social workers to the Falmouth, I mean, the Falmouth Police Department. There were certain situations, I spoke to some, some officers that say, and Chief Dunn on occasion, that sometimes it takes a whole shift to handle a person at the hospital, which takes away from the rest of the force. Monitor the ongoing impact of COVID, potential health threat. That's, that's an ongoing thing. And then, and then address the ongoing drug addiction affecting families. And that goes along with what Anjalee said. What are the root causes? You know, what are the correct responses to it? So that's big on, on my goals. The financial and economic stability and planning. I think it's very important to maintain a triple-A bond status. We need to support departments' program needs. And I think we need to contract with a professional grant writer to help with, you know, the monies that are out there. I think it's very important to support my CFR. I was surprised she wasn't here today, because I, she may have had some input, and I may have had some questions. Contract with a bidding procurement consultant. The goal is prioritize affordable housing. I think being creative is very important. I was lucky enough to be invited to a place called The Preserve in Rhode Island, and I did a tour. And they had a whole subdivision, community of tiny houses. So they were all, they all looked the same. They were just on a smaller scale. All the infrastructure was the same, but at a smaller scale, and everybody loved it, and it was very, very unique and attractive. This wasn't my number one, but this is as important. This is a 1A to me. To improve organizational effectiveness. And we need to fill our, our management positions, the town manager position, HR director. We just lost the water superintendent. All of those things work in conjunction with each other. Five fingers on a hand make a fist. And you can't say to anybody, you know, "What's a finger on my hand don't I need?" And I think those are all equally important to make everything run successfully. We need to engage in departmental reviews processes, maybe because I don't know enough about it and how it works. But I think that's very important. And the retention of employees is equally as important, because you get somebody up to speed, the departments, they take on a cadence with each other, and they work, and then somebody leaves, and it removes an entity out of that, that decreases every, decreases everybody's productivity, I think, because when somebody else comes in, there's an added learning curve to it, which takes away from productivity. Conduct accident abuse. We need to know why our people are leaving, whether it's housing, whether it's interdepartmental problem, whatever it is, we need to know. Otherwise, the ones above that don't count. And, and we need to review our evaluation tools to make sure we're doing it right. Of course, water and wastewater management. One of my goals is to implement water main and replacement plan. We just heard about it the other night, how catastrophic it can be. And being an excavation contractor for most of my life, you can replace that main they just replaced, water pressure is going to find the next path of least resistance. So it's just going to continue down the line, down the line, down the line. Address sewer resiliency issues. I think Ms. Lowell is a brilliant example of how someone that's fully engaged understands the system and can really help us with that. And that's an ongoing thing. Support the DPW mandated stormwater management plan. Coastal and natural resources, infrastructure and beaches. One of the goals is to implement a coastal resiliency plan, which is ongoing. And devise a 10-year beach management plan. The company that I work for now, we have, we have an entity that screens and refines sands that could make them more applicable to beach nourishment. I'm not saying my company. I said that it's, the technology's out there that would make it less expensive to, to be able to do beach nourishment. That's just one thing. And, and again, this is my first report, so forgive me for being so short and maybe distorted, but those are my raw ideas with just getting back to a baseline where we can control, you know, the output of, of the capacity. So, thank you.
Questions or comments?
Just a couple of observations, looking at just what I have, my notes, and, and I'm starting to highlight where there's similarities. So just to reiterate, now, two of us have talked about prioritizing social workers for the Falmouth Police Department, addressing the ongoing addiction, prioritizing affordable housing, the wastewater management plan, and the coastal resiliency plan. So as we continue, I'm going to continue making notes on which ones we, we have all brought up.
Overlapped.
We have, thank you. We have all overlapped on. But I'm personally glad to see that some of the ones that I think are the highest priorities are also yours.
Thank you.
I find it also encouraging that even though the wording is different in our goals and the way we presented it, many of these items are parallel with each of us.
And if you would let me do mine, so that I could perhaps turn the meeting over.
Good idea.
I would appreciate it. So it's really interesting, because I kind of did the same thing. I, everybody submitted their, their goals, and then I started to look at where are the threads that are the same, right? Then I sent them to Diane to have them reformatted so that they all look the same. But when I think about health and safety, I overlap on the clinicians for the, for the Falmouth Police Department. And I, I put a little something in there, because what I'm hearing is that so many of the calls are related to mental health, substance use disorder, and we need to support homeless citizens here in Falmouth. And I think those pieces would be best served by an officer and a clinician. I, I know the officers are highly trained to, to respond and react to those issues. I think it would be very helpful to them for someone who has a clinical background to be able to help them manage those issues. Doug, I noticed this in yours. Follow through on the removal of the town from the requirements of civil service. It's out there. It hasn't, it hasn't happened. Doug had put in his notes to, for the, I think, for the board to craft a letter, I mean, I'd be speaking exactly correctly, but I would completely agree with that. I have also reached out to David Veer and Dylan Fernandez to say, "What's going on?" Because my understanding is that Chief Dunn has people he could put in place. He's down 17 officers, if they were outside of civil service. Again, another thread, really increasing the support to the management of substance use disorder. This is not a Falmouth problem. This is not a Cape problem. This is a national problem. And I think we need to look to other communities and other regional communities and regional offices to see how we can do this better. Because, you know, we saw it really impact the schools a couple of years ago with parents overdosing. And, and it's, I'm not sure what the numbers are now, but I would bet that it continues to happen. Financial and economic stability. I would like to see some kind of contract with a grant writer to go after grants. I think it, it puts pressure on our department heads with everything they have to do to also be monitoring finance opportunities. And if we could have somebody help us out with that, I think that would be really helpful. Maintain the triple-A bond rating. Consider a procurement officer. I know some of the department heads do procurement. I know Jennifer is very involved in procurement, and I just wonder about how we could support that better. I'm going to, really, again, this is, this is my, my personal thing, but I really want to prioritize the support for the Falmouth Public Schools. Our most valuable, incredible resource continues to be our kids. And so for me, that's got to be right up there. And grow the affordable housing stock. If we want children in our schools, we have to provide housing for young families. That's become a major issue. Improve organizational effectiveness. And I know I said highlight some things that are new. I would like to revisit and review the Falmouth Charter. I think we need to take a closer look at that and what its provisions are and what this board would like to see in that charter. Fill current vacancies. I think it's really short-sighted to expect one person to be a town manager, an assistant town manager, and an HR director. And I don't know what other hats you wear, but I, we really need to work on that and make sure that we get the support at the top of the organization, so that the top of the organization can support everybody else in the organization. It just doesn't, it's just not going to work. Focus on equity and inclusion in hiring practice, and I put that in improve organizational effectiveness. And because I believe that doing that will improve our organizational effectiveness, I put in there, instead of making DEI its own category, I just kind of wove it in. Conduct a nationwide search. We'll be coming up on that fairly soon. And then coastal natural resources, and some of this I just took right out of other discussions and other plans. But here's something we can actually do. And I know you've spoken to this, Doug, a million times. But to me, this is a concrete thing that we can do. Design, build Town Hall Main Street, Walker Street, Birm as recommended. So figuring out how to do it, what it costs, excuse me, and what it looks like, is critical. But to me, it's like something I can wrap my hands around and not just an idea. It's an actual action. I think that's really, design, build sewer resiliency is requested. And then this one, I've heard this one sort of bounced around, and so I did include it. Portable bath stalls ensuring handicapped access for beaches and contract for cleaning. That's just something that's out there. I'm not sure it's a specific goal of mine, but it is something I think but it is something I think we could look at moving forward. And that would depend on the board. And then my last, and then my last one. Enhance community engagement. I think that this town does so many good things. I'm not sure that we promote ourselves well enough. We have really hardworking people. We have committed people. Just take a look at our department heads. Take a look at our administration. They are committed to this community. And I'd like to see that reported out a little bit more. I struggle with the website. And maybe that's just me. I'm not the most computer literate. I don't think it's as friendly, user-friendly as it could be. And so I'd like to, and I know we have a new IT person, but that's something I'd like us to continue to look at. And then at one point, I heard and I talked to someone about this, about they had a potluck supper for community members. And I don't know if any of this board ever participated in those, but I hear that that was really a feel-good, important thing. And so I thought it might be important to take a look at that. And then the other thing I just looked at was the newspaper and the ads that we put in the newspaper that are not, even for me, very readable. So if anyone has any questions or comments for me, I'd be happy to entertain them. And then I would really like to turn it over to Anjalee, if that's okay with the board.
So a couple of comments.
Yes.
I really appreciate you saying the focus on equity and inclusion not to be a separate goal. Because I do think if we implement.
Excuse me.
I hope you feel better. If we implement our DEI goals into everything that we do, it's not going to be a separate goal. So hopefully, by the time we do our next strategic planning meeting, it won't be a separate goal. It will be embedded in everything else that we do and we can have a separate goal. Or we can have a different goal, excuse me. And the community engagement, I would like to, I like the idea of having the potluck and improving our website and ads. It'd be really great if we could find some ways for us as elected officials to go out into the community and do things. And so I know that we're all, we go to our committee meetings that we're liaisons for and we have other activities in town that we're involved in. I'm a member of the Cape Verdean Club and all these things. But it would be great if we could somehow organize for us to be present at a lot of the big events that happen in town. Or, what am I trying to say? I know we do that. We go to various activities and events. But I think if we plan strategically to have a representative to go out into the community and really talk to people about what they're doing, what they're concerned about. I think we rely too much on people coming to us with their concerns and with their questions. Coming to board meetings is, you know, we think that it's relatively easy, but maybe it's not for working families. Maybe it's not for people who just don't want to have to trek out at 8:00 PM on a Monday night. So if we could make it more, what's the word I'm looking for?
Convenient.
More convenient, make it more. More accessible, that's what I'm looking for, thank you. Which also goes back to equity and inclusion. If we can make ourselves more accessible to the people that we serve, I think that's something that we should prioritize.
I was just asked about that on Thursday night about, you know, in the past, selectmen would go out, or select board members would go out and have coffee. And once a month, there'd be somewhere where everybody that wanted to show up and speak lightly on issues or concerns or whatever, without being too committed to the policy aspect, but at least an informational thing. It was very popular and it let the people of the community that wouldn't come to a more formal meeting feel like they had a place to go and at least be heard. I think you're exactly right. I would feel something and participate in something like that.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
I had hoped that I could have office space somewhere to be able to invite people, but I realized that that's not quite possible at Town Hall, which is fine because it's limited space. And I have made it a point that anyone who reaches out and says that they want to meet, I'll make time to do that. But again, it's still me requiring that other people do the work. So if we set something like that up, a coffee hour or just make sure that we know somebody is attending an event to be there to represent the board, I think we should do that.
Maybe we should take turns having lunch at the senior center. There's five of us, five days a week. We could each take a turn to have a lunch and somebody would know there's always a board member there that can go and have their concerns heard.
Something like that would be great, yeah. So just.
At the day of Portugal, there was a lot of interaction because they're not used to coming.
Right.
You know, for whatever reason. But there was a lot of, there was a lot of community participation with the board members. And Chief Dunn was there. And it was a very comfortable atmosphere to do that.
Yeah.
I thought.
I mean, I get a lot of comments. I'm out all the time. I go to Suza Palooza and Bands for Badges and a lot of events. And I'm in restaurants and whatnot all the time. And I hear a lot from a lot of people, so.
Yeah.
It's good to be out there and you need to make yourself accessible at all times.
Yeah, so I think if we can just coordinate that, you know, that we know that there's an event that we've heard about and know that we can't attend to, make sure we talk to each other or send specific.
Yeah, and when my wife and I are out and people will come up and say, I hope you don't mind if I bother you. And my wife is like, he loves it. Just don't worry about it. Yeah.
Any other questions or comments for me on my goals?
No, but thanks for reminding us of some of our business at hand, which I didn't put in mind because I just assume it's going to take care of itself. But you're right, it's got to be in there.
And this is our, sort of our first shot at smart goals. And we're not done with it. Because I think we need to sharpen the process a little bit. So this is our first step. But we will be doing it again as we move forward prior to actually writing the strategic plan.
So Ms. Scott Price, I will turn it over to you. I don't have a gavel to give you, I'm sorry.
That's the one thing I was looking forward to.
I actually do have a gavel.
No, I'm just kidding, no.
Thanks.
Thank you.
She's awfully close.
All right, next I have.
Well, we've got Eleanor over there, you know, she can be pretty rowdy.
The next I have on my list is Sam.
Well, you guys went into much more detail. Maybe it's because I've been on the board for more than eight years. And a lot of this is based on who to me. I appreciate your sensitivity and I think we need to keep focusing back on some of these issues. So I'll just say that upfront. I differ from a couple of you on the AAA bond rating because I think it's the wrong focus. You have, I have to ask the question, who gives the AAA bond rating?
Good luck, Nancy.
Yeah, feel better.
Yes, indeed. Again, who gives the AAA bond rating? It's the lenders. I like the Capper because it's an objective tool done by a third party that doesn't have a self-interest in it. It gives you a really objective view of how well you're managing your town. But AAA bond rating is the rating of your lenders. And all they're trying to do is manage their risk. So keeping that as the focus, to me, is pushing the focus the wrong way. And it means that you're doing everything you can to reduce costs without necessarily thinking about the strategic investment. I'm a very fiscally conservative person. I have a healthy net worth. I'm not bragging, but I'm just saying that's, my personality is to be very conservative financially. But focusing on a AAA bond rating, I think, is the wrong thing because I don't think it represents the interest of the citizens. I think it represents the interest of the lenders. I would prefer to use more objective measures of how well we're managing our financial resources and supporting the benefits to the citizens of the town. So that's just my experience. And I feel like we have too singularly focused on that rating without thinking about, should we be doing more overrides in the interest of capital improvements or expansion of staff? Because we have a very low tax rate, if you compare our tax rate to other communities up and down the East Coast. And is that in the citizens' best interest? Especially when we're such a vulnerable community for coastal storms and sea level rise. Not to mention environmental pollution issues because our soils are so porous. So it's such that, you know, what goes into septic systems moves pretty rapidly through the aquifer and into all of our estuaries. So we have some unique problems here. And I'm not sure that we shouldn't be giving our citizens the opportunity to invest in doing a better job of husbanding or stewarding everything that we have in the past. So that was the big issue. So I've made my statement, you've got a copy of it now. So I think that's a pretty big one because I think, I think we've been a little bit too cautious in terms of making some financial investments and capital improvement that would address some of these major issues that this town faces. And I think we're slighting our citizens if we don't give them the opportunity to vote, to decide whether they agree that maybe raising their taxes a little bit more is worth it for strategic projects which help with the overall resiliency and sustainability of the town. And I, most of the goals that you have cited, I think I agree with you. Of course, it costs money. It's to become free. And it's then it becomes a matter of robbing Peter to pay Paul. And is that in the best interest of the citizens? I question. My question is, all right, go along with that. What is approval level of reserves as a percentage of the total operating budget? I can tell you that five years ago, we had a 5% goal. Now, all of a sudden, it's 5 to 25%. Well, come on. What's approval level of reserves? Do we want to keep inflating that? Do we want to keep hoarding money into reserves? I think we need to think about investing it for the benefit of the citizens. So it's a whole financial focus and how it's being driven. And that's a fundamental, I think, priority, a policy that we need to really look at carefully. One more question. Why not use a 10-year capital budget period to assure greater sustainability and improvement of town, business and private property, infrastructure and municipal service? I think five years is too short. I think we need to be thinking 10 years because we cannot accomplish enough in five years to make a significant difference. I think we need to be looking at a 10-year kind of window, if you will. Is the town intentionally using budgeted salaries of open employee positions to generate certified free cash to fund capital expenses? It seems to me we have been behind on the hiring for the entire eight years that I've been on the board. And the question I have is, why? We haven't had as serious a housing issue as we have now because clearly that's a big fact. Filling any of these positions, I don't know how we're going to do it. We certainly can't do it for people that live in Falmouth. It's just too expensive to live here. I mean, I'm talking about in general. If we're going to get a few because we have people of affluence, we have, we have people who are the spouses of affluent people who can afford to live here and fill some of these positions. But it's a really huge challenge. And I've seen it get nothing but worse during the eight-year duration of my tenure on the board. So that's a question. Number, next, is the town? Okay, so that's, that's an issue I think we have to be careful about because we're getting well behind in particularly in the area of public safety. Not to mention the whole mental health issue, which I agree with 100%. We're not, we're not keeping up, quite honestly. Will adding a development and sustainability director add to the cost effectiveness of our town management? And I noticed that I went from being a development director to a community development director to a development and sustainability director because I think the two are interrelated. I think we could address that sustainability issue by having the appropriate focus on community development. So I would just expand that because it brings in, you know, the pleas that we're getting from people like Eleanor. And I think it addresses some of these long-term issues that I believe we have not been able to keep up with. So anyway, I'm asking, I think in the past, the town manager made a very poor pitch to the town meeting. I had many business people in this community come up to me after the vote barely failed when we were asking for a community development director. At the advice, by the way, of a consultant, they came in and looked at our management and recommended it. And many businessmen said, you know, Sam, I think you guys were right. That's what you recommended. We should have created that position. And that was about five or six years ago.
Five years, yeah.
Yeah, about five years. You just said from one war, I think that's more clear. But I think it's a person that needs to keep the town staff and the board focused on these long-term sustainability and community development issues. And I think we've been missing it. And that even has to do with the grant opportunities because such a person would have somebody on their staff that was constantly looking for grants to help pay for some of these initiatives. So anyway, so I'll throw that one out to you. And then just the others are just focus changes. I think it's time to drop the COVID-19 in the language that we have in the current strategic plan and just simply focus on public health. Because COVID-19 has become an endemic issue, much like flu. And we're going to constantly be dealing with this for, you know, who knew, knows how long. Maybe forever it'll be some variant of the COVID virus. And then the others, I think are just sort of repetitious, but I pointed to specific language. Then I just want to go on overall, as I mentioned, about the wording of the strategic plan itself. It is so full of bureaucratic weasel wording and kicking the town down. It's like, create a policy to create the plan. That's bullshit. I'm sorry, here it's simple, that's not direct. I like Nancy's focus on smart planning because it does talk about specific action items and timelines on it. But if you read through the current strategic plan, there is so much weasel wording in there that basically says, how could you figure out whether we accomplished it? Create a policy, whose policy? Where is it going to show up? So I think that the plan is written to basically be able to obfuscate many of the initiatives that are cited in the goals that are in there. And I just, I went, actually, I used my copy of this strategic plan, the current one. And I pulled it out of my records and I looked through all of the edits that were in there. And none of them have been changed. And that was, you know, feedback, but, you know, I feel like Sisyphus has been pushing the rock up the foot. It just needs to hold back down in that regard. But I don't think that's a plan. The current plan is not oriented toward that sort of smart rubric, if you will, for how to generate an action item plan. It's just, it's designed to basically obfuscate all of those goals that we have been citing for since I've been on the board. So that's my last comment because it needs, as far as I'm concerned, some significant editing. And it's not really an action-oriented plan.
It's more goal-oriented.
It's not even goal-oriented. It's designed to just obfuscate all of the initiatives that we bring up in our, in the past strategic planning workshops that we've had. It comes out and it comes out in this obfuscated form, not in any kind of a plan that you could put into a timeline, for instance. Or that would actually break down into tasks that would get to those goals. So I have to tell you, as a person in business, that kind of a strategic plan would never have fallen through a board in a for-profit company.
Right.
So is your recommendation to basically rewrite the strategic plan in sort of a smart form, action-oriented form?
If we want to ever get anything done or if we want our staff to get anything done, I think that has got to happen. Because that is not an effective strategic plan. And I think it's the reason why we may still have no progress. Is there really a reason why we haven't been doing the right financial trade-offs to figure out how to accomplish what's going on? And as long as we focus on pleasing the lenders and not think about managing the risk of the citizens and the business people in this community, we'll just be kind of creeping in the direction and relying on, you know, random little shifts in emphasis. And the latest, and the latest sort of initiative is your, you know, the issue that comes up in front of us that we're dealing with and not looking at strategically.
Thank you, Sam. Any other comments?
I just have a simple question. Sam, I know you're a big proponent of affordable housing and people being able to live here. But how does increasing tax rate and overrides help those people?
Oh, they don't pay for all of that. They're just one small fraction of it. We all do. And we do it for our own benefit. It's a question of investment. Do we need people here to fill out all those open positions on the town? You know, the 17 officers that are on our police force right now? Yeah, is that in our interest to raise our tax rate a little bit?
What about the people that are already here struggling that are also going to be tasked with the overall good that are hardly making it now?
As far as I'm concerned, I have no problem with, you know, a, whatever the term is, a graduated or weighted tax system. So that the people who can afford it pay a little bit more than those who can't afford it. That's, that's a fundamental problem that we have in this country in that we have these flat tax rates. When it really should be at, the question should be weighted in such a way. And there's some extent, because I think Massachusetts is actually pretty good at that relative to the other states. But, you know, we have to think about, you know, who should pick up the biggest part of the cost? You know, quite honestly.
If that's your position, not the position of the board.
You asked me.
Well, that's exactly right.
Yeah, but we're also very lucky in that a large part of the revenue comes from those really wealthy properties along the coast. They pay a much higher percentage, if you will. They pay a much, much higher percentage, if you will, of the tax burden than I do, you know, in my particular community with my particular house on a particular lot.
Thank you, Sam. Any thoughts, Doug?
Just that I've kept the AAA bond rating in mind. And I agree, Sam, there are things that we need to do that are going to cost money and that may impact that bond rating. But at the same time, I don't want to come right out and say that it's not important to me because I'm very proud of the fact that the town was able to achieve that. You know, thanks to Julian for his financial management. And I've put, we had health and public safety last time for the number one goal. And this year, I'm making financial and economic stability and community development my number one goal. And top of the list is affordable housing. I think we're all pretty much in agreement on that is our biggest problem. I think we're on good track, actually, with regard to affordable housing. I think we just need to follow through now and implement plans that are already in place. We are to continue to support the zoning reform and allow greater density in central locations of town. The planning board's done a great job of redesigning the Davis Straits area and offering us these opportunities and business zones to use multifamily housing and the accessory apartment development. Those apartments are more and more coming before the planning board and the ZBA. And they're getting in a groove now where people understand what's required and that they're popping up all over. And I think they're fitting in nicely. So I think now we have to find a way to maintain level funding at $4 million a year to the Affordable Housing Fund because when we did that last year and we looked at what our housing production target is between 60 and 70 houses, $4 million is just about right to maintain and sustain that. If we can find larger projects like the one on Grant Nav corner, 48 units and we're kicking in, what, $55,000 per unit, which is much less than if we would do individual standalone homes or try to rescue a home that's, you know, could be brought online. I think that was 200, 225 or something for one house. So I think we need to look for economies of scale to get the most bang for our buck. And I'm with you on the, consider the moratorium on short-term rentals. Although we just voted a new tax to help offset that, I don't think that's enough. As I mentioned before, when I was traveling down to visit my daughter, we rented an Airbnb in Maryland. And it was amazing to me that page after page after page was all one corporation that had bought up all these houses in this area. It's a rural area, but it's the Civil War battlefield, it's a big tourist attraction. And it's scary to think that that could be coming here next. Right now, most of what we have is individual people renting a part of their home or one home or taking a vacation and getting a little income while they go away. That is probably sustainable, but when corporations start moving in and buying up all the houses, say, like a block here and a block there, things are really going to change. I'm in favor of putting that on-
Makes it more commercial, doesn't it?
It does, and it really will exacerbate the problem quickly. So I think we better move on considering the moratorium if it's possible. I don't even know if it's possible, I don't know what the laws are, but I'd be interested to learn.
Yeah, we'll, we'll talk about it. It, um, like most things, it's, it's not going to be-
It's complicated.
Regulatory issues, that is.
Right.
It's, from the little bit of research that town council has done that I've spoken to her about, it's very difficult to take away existing property owners' short-term rental rights. So it might be a zone, effectively might be a zoning issue that makes existing short-term rentals existing non-conforming and, but could limit future short-term rentals going forward.
Maybe there's a kind of a prohibition on commercial development of rentals rather than private property owners' rights?
I don't think we need to get too much in the weeds of it right now. But I think the point is that there's a lot of work to be, to be researched.
Yeah. Okay. So integrate the role of community development director into the assistant town manager job description. Just one idea I have. I think we have an opportunity here now to consider if we want to look at that position. And welcome feedback if you think that's something that might be helpful.
I think Peter's kind of been doing it in his position as an assistant town manager, quite honestly. He's kind of picked up that whole area of management responsibility.
But that's sort of a voluntary thing that he's taken on that role? If it's not in the job description?
I think the town manager probably gave him that responsibility, right? I mean, it may have defaulted, but-
But I'm saying we're going to be hiring an assistant town manager.
Yeah.
So maybe we consider changing the job description now to make it clear that you got to organize these department heads and-
What'd you just say? We're going to be hiring what?
An assistant town manager. We're going to be hiring a town manager and hence we'll be hiring an assistant as well.
Oh, all right. I didn't know that was, we were advertising for assistant town manager.
We're going to hire a town manager first. And once we do-
I was clarifying what you said.
And that town manager will hire a new assistant.
Okay.
Or maybe Peter would continue in that role, but I, I don't know. Capital plan funding strategies, I think is maintain current practice. The sustainability director, I think, should be hired as soon as possible. I wrote 2024 because I think that's as soon as we can probably practically expect to do it. But if you think it can be folded into the current budget, I'd be happy to see that.
You mean the budget for next year, the operating budget?
Yeah, sustainability director because I, I look to the sustainability director to be a person with grant writing expertise, who can also assist other department heads perhaps. It'll be a white, it'll be a hard job to fill because that person has to be so diversified. Monitor and apply for grant opportunities, alert and assist department heads with applications. Capital plan, I already said, maintain current practice. Maintain the comprehensive annual financial, the CAFR, maintain current practice, I think it works well. Work closely with the school department for budget development early on, and I think Peter's way ahead of the game on that. Identify ideal budget levels for optimum performance of departments. So this is a different way of saying what Sam is saying, that are all of our departments fully funded? Are there goals and objectives to operate more effectively? They're not being met because of short staffing? Maybe they don't have the resources that they need to optimize their performance. Identify new revenue sources. I don't know exactly what we could identify as revenue sources, but I think in terms of all the, all the revenue that's generated at the county level on the real estate transactions. I know Martha's Vineyard had put a percentage tax or real estate transaction fee on any house sold for, I think it was a million or more. And that goes into Affordable Housing Fund. I don't know if the town has a leverage to do that or if it has to be on the county level.
Or state level.
Maybe there's some mechanism that family can start to identify new revenue sources. Maybe there's things that we can do more efficiently to not waste as much money. I don't know what those would be, but we need to start looking into what we're going to do because a lot of these ideas are going to cost money and we struggle to balance the budget every year. So we're going to have to think about some new revenue sources if they're out there. Maintain a AAA bond rating, I left that in there because I just feel like to say otherwise would just mean I, I'm not, I don't intend to be responsible. So I'm just going to keep that in there, but keep an open mind to the points that you made, Sam. Improve public transportation into village shuttle, town-owned electric trolley, that's just an idea I threw out there. I think it would be great if anybody could walk down to their local village center and know that they could get anywhere around town with a big loop of transportation. It's sort of in place now, but it's not really reliable. I have a guy that comes and does gardening at my house and he has to ride a bike to the next bus stop. So I've learned a lot about our transportation system just by, how you, where are you going today? How are you getting around? Has to time his day around his public transportation. We're doing a lot better than we were just several years ago. Tom Kehrer's really helped, but maybe the town needs its own transportation plan as well. Water and wastewater management and explore and develop discharge capacity. I think that's my number one priority. I don't know if that would be the outfall or we determine that the outfall's too expensive when we get busy with the Allen parcel. But we need to get our wastewater discharge in order. Because to have people come before us and a little bit of uncertainty whether or not we should be approving projects or not based on the capacity, I just don't think that's acceptable in the long term. We need to really figure that out quickly. Expedite replacement of ancient water mains. I think a lady at Public Comment made very clear, they're dealing with in their street. And I hope that street is prioritized in the capital budget. I'm not sure if it is, I'd have to look. Water conservation strategies, zero-interest loans for irrigation walls, drip irrigation, toilet replacement program. When I wrote toilet replacement program, I was thinking in terms of all the five-gallon toilets that are still flushing around town. That, I think the town should just buy a truckload of low water use. I got a brand in mind, but I won't say it. There's a very effective, affordable lane toilet that the town could buy them, just offer to put them in for people. It's a very quick job. A plumber can change a toilet in a very short time. And we're wasting a lot of money on the old toilets, five gallons to flush a toilet is crazy. And maybe now we consider the year of diverting toilets if they come online and buy a bunch of those and pass those out to people everywhere. Because even if we're giving away a toilet, we're saving money in the end because it's less water we have to process at the filtration plant. It's less resource that we're losing. Irrigation well program, all of our peninsulas are, you know, saturated with high nutrient water. If we can have wells extracting that and using it on the top surface, we're going to be quicker, quicker to clean up our estuaries. So I think that should be something that we make it, you know, the town maybe should lead the way and show how it's done. Because I understand back in the old days, people used to drive wells by hand with a sledgehammer. They just hit it a few times, come back the next day, hit it a few times more. I'm not suggesting that's what we do, but the idea is that wells are not that difficult to do. And I think if a lot more people had them, another less strain on our, on our water source. And people can share them. I have a well irrigation at my place and I share it with my neighbor. And if the neighbor on the other side wanted to use it, they could too. It's run along hose over there and it could be a neighborhood resource. You could have one well in, in the middle of a group of houses, everyone could share it. So, just an idea. We need to really conserve water. Health and public safety, I've got down here as my third one. Identify, amplify our rescue department staffing levels to maintain a six-station model. We'll be talking cheap shortly about that. Budget for future payroll and apply for safer grant. I'd like to really understand that more. I'm saying it, but I can't, I'm not saying that I really completely understand the implications of how we would do a future budget to fold in those positions when the safer grant ends. I, I hope that there's a strategy that we can come to and make sure that it's going to work. Identify best practice for number of police patrols in a town the size of a population of Falmouth. Currently, we run five cruisers and I suspect we should be at seven. That's just my, I'm no police authority, but I just feel like the town has grown so much, but yet that hasn't changed in a long time. Like to see a comparative study by a consultant and with no predefined constraints on the parameters for the study. Just let them come in and tell us comparatively what other towns do and whether or not we're falling behind in that department. Consider new locations for the Falmouth Police Department Headquarters Building. Maybe the corner of Brick Hill Road and Gifford Street. I know the town owns a piece of land there. I feel like where it is right now is not the ideal place. And also, ancient building, we're spending a million dollars on it now just to make it workable. Because if you go in and see, sorry, it's all crammed in one room, it's pretty embarrassing. So I'm glad that we're doing what we're doing. I don't think it's a waste of money because this is a long-term goal. But I think we should be thinking about the relocation of the fire department, I mean, the police department and also the town hall eventually. Town hall's probably not in the best location. I didn't write that on here. Advocate for removing the FPD from civil service, letters to elected officials I think are in order now. Health department should work closely with county health department to collaborate on issues regarding public health. I'm not going to focus on COVID anymore. I think COVID's pretty much in our rearview mirror, we'll see. But I think as long as our health department is very capable, works with the county and stays in touch with what's going on, we're going to be on the downside of COVID. Coastal natural resources and infrastructure and beaches. Implement the coastal resiliency action plan as directed by the Coastal Resiliency Action Committee. I think there's a lot of important work that's in there. A lot of it has to do with zoning and stuff that different groups can take on. The ZBA can address the questions that are in that report. I hope they take it up. And I think the town has plenty of stuff on its plate that they can get to work on. I'd like to develop a staff coaching resiliency team for implementation of identified objectives. I think the committee was great, they did a lot of great work. It was a lot to think about, but we've got three reports now. One from, I don't know, 15 years ago and one from about eight years ago. And now we've got the new one. They all identify the same kind of issues, but the latest one is the best because it's a culmination of all three and it gives us a lot of guidance that we have yet to take up. So I hope we get busy with that. I'd like to see us request assistance from coastal zone management and elected officials to maximize seafloor mapping program to identify potential mining sites for offshore dredging opportunities. Ongoing mapping associated with farm development offers significant opportunities for advancement of this initiative. Currently underway in off the coast of Westport and South Dartmouth. And they've advocated for exactly that. And they're asking to have seafloor mapping to potentially identify mining sites so they can enhance their beaches. I'd like to see us do the same thing and just ask for it. I mean, just let them know that we're aware of that this project is going on and there's a side benefit that could come out of it. Develop budgets for dredging projects not currently included in the 10-year comprehensive permit. That's going to be very expensive. We'll have to decide this, the one-off the Walkway Yacht Club is a big project where we are having a consultant right now. Look at whether or not we want to open up that channel and what the impacts of it are going to be. Beaches are going to be changing so fast, I think we need to get a, a more swift response to these coastal actions. I think there's too many cooks in the soup. The, I put on here, I'd like to see the Army Corps of Engineers recuse itself from these coastal projects. They're not staffed enough, they can't respond. They're holding up projects, they're holding up our project at Manon Bridge. To the point right now, we pushed it, I think, six years. Some of it's on our, our end, but two years in a row, the Army Corps has been unable to complete the permit. When COVID was going on, they completely ignored the project to the point where the data was so old, they said, oh, we need all new data. Then they got all new data and left it sitting for another six months. Now we've missed another season. So the permitting process needs to get fixed.
Doug, you've got a lot going on here. So can, may I ask a question so I don't? How do you force or request that recusal? What, what's the avenue to go to?
Send a letter to CZM and the governor, whoever would-
Sure, it'd be legislative requests to, for, to force recusal.
Just to point out the fact that this permitting system isn't working, we need relief of some sort.
Not, not that I don't agree, I'm just saying, what is the avenue that you're proposing?
It's letters to legislators and, and to the governor even.
Sorry to interrupt you, but-
No, that's fine.
A lot going on.
Yep. And so I think that's an important one that we could do right away. Send the letter and just say, identify, we have a great case study with Manon to say, obviously, this isn't working. And granted that they went through COVID, but we all do.
You don't have to convince me, I agree with you on this.
Yeah. So develop budgets for dredging, nourishment projects. So we need to think about beach nourishment in two ways. One of them is when we're doing a dredging project, we need to put the sand somewhere. But we also have needs for beach nourishment when our beaches are inadequate. Maybe we should consider trucking in sand. My friend Jeff Williams, the coastal geologist, he's been down to Lawrence and Lynch and he's been down to Cape Cod, Agaravitz, Kids. He said both of them have clean, washed sand with the grain size that's perfectly fine for our beaches. And I think it's something we need to consider because when Chappaquaay Beach has no beach, why wouldn't we put some sand out there? I mean, what's it really hurting?
They, they, they do it all over the place. And you can manu, I, I know, you can manufacture a speck with cleanliness without silt to encompass that exact thing. I know for a fact you can do it.
And so I think we need to have either expedited permit for those beach management jobs or maybe a standing permit that says, we are already permitted, we've already figured this out. If they need sand every year, let them just bring it down there and just keep that beach functional.
As a maintenance-
As a maintenance issue.
Maintenance line item.
Just like our 10-year comprehensive dredging permit, we should have a 10-year beach nourishment.
It benefits to maintain a certain footage.
Exactly.
Yeah, I get it.
You should have a right to have a certain amount of beach or it's just not, you know, manageable.
That's the way Florida operates.
Pardon me?
That's the way Florida operates.
Right.
They just literally dredge sand from off the beach and put it back.
Where it gets sucked out.
And they know they need to do that because that's how they support their industry.
Right.
So they basically just keep putting it back.
Makes sense.
And so I wonder also about the beach nourishment projects. I, sometimes people just put the sand just on the top. And I'd like to see us come up with best practice for beach nourishment. Because I understand from the engineers and geologists that I speak to, a real beach nourishment project should go all the way down to the toe of the slope. Because if you're just piling sand on the top, you're making a more steep drop off.
You're creating a greater angle of repulse.
Exactly.
You are.
It's just going to create more erosion. And I think we need to think through these projects and really do them more, more practically as the engineers design. Uh, nourishment project community-
Nourishment project community rating system, update annually. That's already in place and keep it going. Develop interest, infrastructure policy. We've got the vulnerability assessment. And I know the staff is already working on it, but I think we should all pay attention to thinking about whether or not we want to elevate or relocate. As really, that's the basic question because a lot of stuff that's in place won't be able to stay and we'll have to think about that. Propose legislation to streamline the coastal resilience projects. I touched on this earlier. Remove Army Corps of Engineers. Perhaps the Conservation Commission might not want to be involved in projects that are outside the bay. Maybe it could be just coastal zone management and DEP. That would streamline the permit process. That's just a thought. I don't know if that's something we could do. Maybe if the projects are in Nantucket Sound and Vineyard Sound and Buzzards Bay, they don't involve interior estuarine areas. Maybe DEP and CZM review process. And I'd like to see a two-year maximum period on it. Just like when you apply for building permit, they have thirty days to respond either yes or no. There should be a cap on these coastal projects because by the time two years comes, the coast has changed already. So it's got to be, it's got to be speeded up. Beaches, develop and implement beach management plan, beach profile studies, beach nourishment objectives and strategies. Consider trucked in washed sand for maintenance. Consider beach department enterprise fund. We used to have a beach department enterprise fund. Many years ago, we decided it would be best to put it all in one pot. I don't think it's working as well as it could. I don't think the beach, it's always a struggle at the start of the season to get ready. It's hurry up. And the DPW has so many things to do. I think the beach department should have the ability to fund its own subcontractors to come in and do what they need to do to get their, their houses, I mean, their beach houses ready, get their beaches filled with sand. They should have their own funding. Work closely with sustainability. It also gives a opportunity for more grant opportunities as well when you have an enterprise fund. Work closely with sustainability director and coastal resilience coordinator to optimize grant opportunities and improve accessibility. They have done really good putting out the beach mats, but there's still a lot of things that could be improved about accessibility in the beaches. Organizational effectiveness. This section remains the same. I'm not intending to make big changes to it, but we need to revisit it and see if we're actually doing what's mentioned in that organizational effectiveness section. Hiring sustainability director in 2024 and coastal resiliency coordinator in 2025. That's my hope is, I don't think we should do them both in the same year. We'll hire the sustainability director first and I think within the first year, we're going to realize that that is a full-time job for somebody. And then I think we're going to probably realize that they, they're not able to do the coastal resilience, but we'll see. Maybe it'll be a person that can do more than I'm expecting. Energy conservation and solid waste. Implement energy conservation measures. Continue the ESCO program. Improve building efficiency. I'd like to see us construct solar canopies on all viable municipal and school parking areas. And in our current plan, it says when repaving occurs, but I don't think we should wait till repaving occurs. They do it all the time. You just run a little trench to get your electric connection. Doesn't mean the whole parking lot has to be repaved. So I wouldn't want to wait on that. I'd like to see car charging stations at all these places with all these solar canopies and credit card operated. Quick charge, twenty minutes. Continue to integrate electric vehicles into the fleet. Develop solar ray over the entire wastewater plant site to replace the wind turbine production. Explore and implement municipal sites for alternative energy opportunities. Solid waste management. Develop the future waste contract two years prior to expiration of current contract. This was explained to me by Carl Cabosa. That's what they did in Westport where he was lucky enough to get the town contract. They put out the RFP two years in advance. They gave six months to reply. And once the award was given, they had a whole year to get ramped up, buy trucks, hire people, and they knew what was coming. So I hope that's going to be a model that we can consider in our next trash contract. Maintain rail access to the transfer station for continued operation. Whether or not that's a new spur coming off the bridge that's built before ours gets closed out. A lot of people want to see the rail replaced with bike path and I understand because it's a tricky route. There's a lot of waterways and they'd have to build some bridges to get the bike path across. The current idea is pretty dangerous going back out onto these little windy roads wherever those bridges are. So if the rail is going to be relocated, I would go with the rail two trail. But unless they're going to do that in the bridge project, which we'll see, I would say that we should all advocate for keeping that rail. Because I think the transfer station is going to be invaluable to us in the future. Trash toters for the next.
Can I interrupt you for one? That, that line item right there has some, some possibilities and creativity. If, if, if we could haul, haul trash out and haul product, whatever it may be, to help sustain the infrastructure back. Such as sand from somewhere else that was cheaper to bring back and house here. You know, back hauling is always far more fiscally responsible than just hauling one way out. So that's a possibility to explore just on that one. You know, how do, how do we gain on empty return trips with any kind of logistics?
Right.
So I, I like that one.
It's a good one. I think we need to develop a food waste recycling composting program with residential pickup. That also will help us with our next trash contract. I, I mean, we were lucky this last trash contract wasn't much higher than it is. I mean, it's higher, but costs are only going to increase. So I think we need to get the food out of the waste, waste stream. And I think a lot of people in Falmouth that would take to that. I don't know where that site would be, but it may be a giant composting digester like they use over in Nantucket. I think we could have a real good system here. Community engagement. Overhaul the town website. I understand we did already use our overhaul option, but many substantial issues remain unresolved. Town administration relies primarily on the website as the number one method of public outreach. Its functionality and usability are of utmost importance. Additional funds should be applied to engage an outside consultant to address improvements. I think that's something that really needs to get done right away. It's not just Nancy. I have trouble with the town website. I try to search things. I've kind of given up. Now I just do a Google search and that helps navigate the website better than actually I can navigate it myself. And that's what I tell people to do and it seems to work better. But we shouldn't have to do that. Share social media policy with department heads and advise how best to proceed with public information sharing. I think we could do a lot more to get the word out and take a lot more advantage of social media. I see the Falmouth Police and the Fire Department are doing a great job of updating and engaging people and it's really popular. I see, you know, the followers just continue to increase and I enjoy the updates.
Can I just interject there? Just a very quick update that we did just a couple of weeks ago adopt a social media policy for town departments to sponsor their sites. So we've had, I think, four or five come through and get approval to create new social media websites. A lot of work to do. I'm not saying check it off. It's done.
Right.
But we're working on it.
Yep. And I'd heard that and that's why I wrote, share the social media policy because I know you have it. Thank you. And other community engagement items remain unchanged. So that's my list. I kind of overdid it. I took the whole strategic policy and kind of rearranged it. That's my wish list.
Thanks, Doug.
Can I just respond and say, I know you guys don't agree with my comment about de-emphasizing the AAA bond rate. But when I look at all the things that you're asking for, if we can't increase that death drop off window, to use Peter Boyer's terminology for it. There's no way we can touch any of this stuff.
Right. That's why I said I agree with you on the substance, but I just don't want to put it in writing that, that it's not important to me because I just feel like, I have to feel like I have to keep saying that that's.
And I, I understand what you're saying, but to kind of keep that up there is sort of the primary fiscal goal to me is not taking into consideration the complexity of all these other challenges in the, in our community. And I think we just have to be careful because remember it's staff that are making many of these decisions on a day-to-day basis. And if that's all they're focusing on is don't lose that AAA bond rating. I just want to see us have a policy that basically maintains fiscal, fiscal conservative approach to find, the finances of the town. Definitely want to see that. Don't get me wrong. I just don't like the idea of using the AAA bond rating, which is, you know, that's an indicator given to us by the lenders rather than thinking about the big picture of how we manage the risk for the town. You know, and, and again, I want to say, I believe in public referents. I think we should ask whenever we think there ought to be more firemen or more police. And give the community the opportunity to go ahead and pay a little bit more taxes to get better benefits. And that's the part that I feel like we're, we're basically circumscribing rather than letting the public decide what the level of services they want, that they want and need.
Yeah. Well, I didn't highlight enough what I wrote in there of optimize, optimize department efficiency. I don't remember exactly how I worded it, but if you look at that, it means are our departments fully funded or are there goals that remain unmet because of fiscal constraints? I think there are and I'd like to identify what the actual ultimate best practice budget would be. I mean, is it really a hundred and forty-six million or is it a hundred and fifty-eight million? Is there a little six million dollar window that we're missing that would just put us over the top? And if it were that, if it's a six million dollar difference that's going to be sustainable, what would that cost per house? And would we bring that to the voters and say, we're, we're kind of shortchanging you on services? Here's what we really think it's going to take. And I'd like to see everybody really develop a real budget that says, I could do better if I had just this much more, if it's really needed. Maybe they're going to come back and say, you know, thirty-five departments will say, no, we're, we're good right here and we can maximize. We can efficiency, you know, we can find efficiencies, but I feel like this, every year, there's, this department does okay, but that one's missing something. And we know that we cut things out of everybody's budget every year. So I mean, we probably already have their best practice budget, but it's not surviving the, the budget cut process.
Well, don't forget.
Peter wanted to say something.
Well, I just went to this point though. Don't forget the other point I made, which is the whole idea that where does certified free cash come from? That funds our capital budget. Where does it come from?
Oh, over conservatively.
Positions in departments that have been voted on and approved by town meeting that aren't being filled. Because that's where our largest overhead is, is in labor dollars. And so if you don't fill those positions, guess where the money goes? Into the cap. We're, we're basically funding the capital improvement needs of the town by not replacing positions. And that, I mean, whether that's done deliberately or whether it's done because there's not enough affordable housing and we can't hire. Whether it's, you know, the, the, the hiring process that the police and fire are forced to go through. It is a dynamic that's going on and it is essentially funding the capital budget. And is that right? Because it's a trade-off that's being made, whether it's deliberate or otherwise. It's a dynamic that's there. So I think we need to be, we're thinking strategically. We need to recognize that. And that's, that's my point.
Go ahead, Peter.
Yeah, I, I don't know how much we want to get into it now. I just wanted to say if, if the board wants to have sort of a fuller conversation about the bond rating and the extent to which it does or does not constrain the town's options with respect to spending. I'd be happy to do that. And, you know, not, I, I want to be very careful. I'm not.
You're not agreeing with me.
No, no, I'm not. I don't want to weigh in, you know, I don't want to weigh in abstractly about whether we should be taxing more or not. But I will say that the, you know, what the bond rating is, there, there are many different factors to the bond rating, right? And certainly if you spend very close to your revenues, that's going to compromise your bond rating. And there are caps in terms of how much borrowing you have, again, relative to your revenue sources. But to the extent that the community chooses to increase the tax burden in order to spend more, that doesn't inherently compromise the bond rating.
Got you. Yep. Makes sense.
Thank you, Peter. Any other comments on, I mean, I have some, but okay. Your, one of your specific points about the toilet replacement program, I think was a very good point about how that would help reduce the burden for wastewater management. And that's one place where I wonder if there's grant opportunities available. So if we had someone who could look into grants, that might be an option. And someone also compare the return on investment on that, kind of like what you were saying. Is, is it going to be worth it in the long run if the town pays for all of these new toilets and pays perhaps even to install them or, you know, remove the old toilets, all those things? Would the return on investment be worth it? For the coastal natural resources, infrastructure and beaches, so something that I, I had on my, my notes that was not on the document I submitted was connecting with the scientists in Woods Hole. We have an amazing group of scientists at all the institutions in Woods Hole that do a lot of this work already and we need to better capitalize on that. So I know Ken Forman, I know him pretty well. He's at the Marine Biological Laboratory. He recently gave a presentation to the Water Quality Management Committee. We talked about the work that he's doing in Little Pond, but they were looking at how the sewer ring has affected Little Pond. And using students, some of my students, every summer to go out there and do that research. And so if there was a way that we could connect with those scientists where the town puts the bill for part of paying for research or for a year or two to work on a specific project, you know, things that we find are most important, that we want somebody to look at immediately. We already have those resources. But as Sam is saying, we have, we've got to decide if that's where we want to put our money. So I wanted to mention that. And some of the other beach implementation plan ideas are in this coastal resiliency committee report. And I know the plan is that our next meeting, correct, is we're going to dive more into the coastal resiliency specifically. So I think those are some good points that were made. And once again, there's a lot of common themes with coastal resiliency in general, affordable housing, managing waste recycling and composting and overhaul of the town website. Just a few things that I noticed have also been said already. Absolutely.
You know, we talk, there, there's a lot of overlapping benefits to some of the things we're talking about. And I understand why this is so very important, but one of the ones that just occurred to me or, you know, we talk about the website, right? Then we talk about community involvement. The easier it is for the community to connect with us on a certain specified level, the better off we'll all be because we'll get some of the answers to these questions. Sometimes it's just too hard for people to interact at arm's reach. I mean, not everybody can come here and navigate this system, this public hearing system. When I was on the zoning board, I know that there had been some, some significant confusions on what was on hard copy, what was on the website. And on a regulatory board, that's an issue if they don't coincide. If, if we as public officials at times can't figure it out, how do we expect the community to be able to figure it out and even have the, the want or the need to even try? You know, very, far too many times I've talked to people that just throw their hands up and they just go with it. That's not good enough. So, you know, the website and dialing down, maybe we need to bring somebody from the outside in to get their input. Just a regular citizen who's experiencing some kind of trouble to help give us some input and context to that, that very thing. Those are the, we talk about all these big things. If we can't fix little things like that, I think you're right. It exacerbates the big things and creates stumbling blocks for us going forward. Because a lot of these issues we're talking about have to be explained to the public. And then they go to their town meeting members for a vote, but they need to understand what they're talking to their town meeting members about. And if we can do that, even a little bit better, we're a little bit better off.
Absolutely.
That's where I'm at with it.
And I forgot to put on here the importance of the fiber network initiative. I feel like that's really important because I, I still struggle with my internet connection and I don't really do that much. I'm neat, I'm not a gamer. I don't upload big files, but just to sit and stream a movie, you know, and I'm paying for the higher service. So I feel like so many people would have a work at home business could come here if we had that better fiber. So I should have put that in my.
They've been using the toilets more, Doug.
Yeah. We need Wi-Fi toilets.
Well, I think the idea of this was to look at some of the broader ideas and we can drill down into them. So I made a note on that.
Yeah.
You just mentioned, there was actually a pretty good program on television last night out of Rhode Island, actually. It talked about municipal loan utilities and specifically they were looking at electric utilities, you know. And it, it turns out there's quite a few across Massachusetts and Rhode Island where the communities still run their own electric utility. But it goes to the fact, the question of that municipal power, the light power regulation that allows us to use broadband in this community and manage it as a municipal infrastructure and not turn it over strictly to the private market. And it turns out that, that those local, locally owned and operated electric utilities are actually more efficient and more, less, more cost-effective and more reliable. And I don't think people appreciate that. You know, they think, you know, oh, we'll just, we'll go with whoever the carrier, you know, the distributor is right now. You know, they think, you know, oh, we'll just, we'll go with whoever the carrier, you know, the distributor is right now. They own the poles and they own all that kind of thing. But not think about the benefits of municipally-run infrastructure. And I think we just assume that the private market can do it more efficiently. And in fact, if you look at the record, it's saying that's not true.
Interesting.
Yeah, but, you know, this is relative to fiber to the house or fiber to the property. You know, there is evidence that suggests that other types of infrastructure that are run by the city, the municipality, is actually more cost-effective than turning it over to a private entity to do.
Right, because they have to make a significant profit where the town just has to cover its costs.
You ready to go next or?
So in turn, I was just going to ask about next step. So at the next strategic planning session, I think we're going to, based on the conversations you and Nancy and I have had, dive deeper into affordable housing and coastal resilience. But also I think the, the chair's goal was to get to five priorities. And, you know, we've talked about, you know, probably a lot more than that.
Yeah.
So, you know, we don't need to decide that now, but I just wanted to sort of put the question out. What's, you know, what is the board going to do in terms of next steps to distilling those priorities down to something that is, you know, an actionable, realistic list of things to do?
You did overlap quite a few of them.
Yeah.
You did carve it down some.
Yeah, so do we want to, are we saying we want to spend time? I'm not sure what the, what Nancy's plan was. Was it planned to distill this down now?
Well, I don't, you know, I don't know if it makes sense for each of you individually to, you know, go back and say, okay, you know, what are my top five?
And consolidate.
Yeah, I think if we, I can, some of the notes that I have here that I've written down, I can send out to everyone. And we can come back with just the, the top five. And then what I think we should do is we should have those as our overarching goals and we should reverse engineer. So if we say our, our overall goal is, I'm just going to take this one, water wastewater management expedite. We know we want to expedite the water mains, we know we want to look at identifying potable water sources. And then backtrack, how do we do that? Do we have a policy for that? If not, do we need to make one? Who is the department that would manage this? Do we have their input on this? And kind of reverse engineer that way. That's what I'm thinking is probably the, the best way to move forward. And then to Sam's point, it will get us to a strategic plan that has actionable steps and goals. And perhaps we can have benchmarks, places that we can come back and review it throughout the next year or so.
Because safety, in situations like that, safety and liability are paramount. I mean, that, they, they increase the, the priority for that anyway. I mean, there are some things we do that we have to do because it's imperative.
Right.
Because it creates a public safety problem that supersedes everything else.
Right.
At least in that priority list going forward. So I think, I think that should be identified, you know, safety and, and public safety concerns.
Public health, when you say public safety, that needs to go in there too.
I think, yeah, I think those can be together. Because they do.
I mean, what, what, the water main issue, we all know that it's old and antiquated and, you know, should take priority at least, you know. And in very, very near future, we just can't continue to keep on Band-Aids on it. We need to do large sections at a time.
And it's super wasteful because it's a long time leak in before it bubbles up and you realize.
Well, and it creates, it creates extenuating circumstances other than just the break. I mean, it diminishes compaction in the surrounding area. So it's not just digging it up and fixing that spot, the whole, the, and again, like I said, it goes to path of least resistance. You're just, you're just kicking the can literally down the road with these patches.
So I think what I will recommend to the chair is that we work, she and I and Peter work together to create a template. Looking at the current strategic plan, looking at what an actionable strategic plan would look like. A template with our top priorities and within those top five priorities, ten goals to men, to get to that overarching goal. And, and then we can talk in discussion with each other at our next strategic planning session on how we achieve those goals. And well, do we agree on what these goals are? And then how do we achieve the goals that we've identified?
And then updates on agenda, on regular meetings, on progress, agenda.
Yep. So we can include.
Because people want to know, you know, where are you with this, where are you with this?
Yeah, we pick them off on the regular agenda as we go along.
Yeah, I think, I think it's informative and inclusive.
Okay. Fantastic, can we take a three-minute recess?
Your call.
Okay.
Into this presentation, I'd just like to make a note that we do not have space for public comment during this presentation. However, if anyone has any clarifying questions, you're welcome to ask those through the chair, vice chair. And if there is anything that you would like the board to know or to consider, please email us or talk to us later.
Thank you. So this is a follow-up to the presentation that I made a few weeks ago. The focus for today is less on, you know, what's going on right now and more focusing on planning for the Hatchville Station and looking ahead a few years. So I'm going to review the timeline of fire station construction and staffing decisions that have led us to this point and describe future staffing needs, specifically when the Hatchville staffing needs for when the Hatchville Station is opened, and then talk about a budget plan for meeting those staffing needs. So the decisions leading to the current situation, I'll start with the spring of 2020, which was the year that that the Select Board and Town Administration brought forward an override to hire eight firefighters. That budget also included two positions within the budget not funded by an override. And as I was preparing for this presentation and reviewing my files, I came across the explanation that was printed in the warrant for that override article, and I'll just read it briefly. "These added positions will enable the fire department to increase start-of-shift staffing from fourteen to sixteen per shift and facilitate adherence to the two firefighter per engine ladder minimum while continuing to operate all five existing fire stations until completion of a new fire station." At that ti- or with the addition of those ten positions, eight on the override, two within the budget, that brought the total fire department shift strength staffing to seventy-four. And just as a reminder, in terms of my terminology, I'm going to use the term firefighters broadly, and I'm really speaking about the firefighters, lieutenants, and captains that count toward shift strength staffing and these numbers of minimum shift per station. So firefighters is just a shorthand. So then, that was in the spring of 2020. In 2021, at the April Town Meeting, design funds for the Sandwich Road Hatchville Station were approved. In August of 2021, the strategic plan included a goal to continue to staff the West Falmouth Station as resources permit until construction of new replacement fire station is completed. And that does imply a six-station model. That goal was further clarified through a couple of Select Board meetings in 2021, and again in the spring of 2022. Most recently, the March twenty-eighth Select Board voted a policy to confirm a plan to staff six stations once Hatchville is operational and until the Northwest Combined Station is operational. So the the plan as, or the policy is adopted by the board as of March is to operate six stations when the Hatchville Station comes online, and then to pursue a combined Northwest Fire Station, and then at that time go to a five-station model. In April and May of 2022, the debt exclusion was approved by Town Meeting and at the election ballot respectively to construct the Hatchville Station, the borrowing funds to construct the station. And in the fiscal 2023 budget, that's the current fiscal year budget, three additional firefighters were added to the budget to improve our ability to get to sixteen firefighters at the start of each shift. In addition to those three that were added to the budget, the chief also initiated a restructuring within his budget to create another firefighter position because a fire alarm superintendent position was phased out because it's no longer needed because the system was replaced with a vendor-supported system. So we actually, we are in the process of adding four additional firefighters in the current fiscal year budget. Okay, so this is a slide that we're probably going to spend a bit of time on. This, these are the chief's staffing plans by station, and I'm showing three different sort of planning phases. So starting with the current situation and the current five stations that we have. And this is not new to the board. You've seen this before where the staffing plan, and again, I'm just focusing on shift strength. This isn't the entire department, including the deputy chiefs and the fire inspectors, et cetera, but those that are at each station and responding to incidents. There are six at headquarters, two at the Woods Hole Station, two at North Falmouth, two at West Falmouth, four at East Falmouth. As we look ahead to the Hatchville Station coming online, this next column shows what is, in the chief's view, a very bare-bones, not optimal staffing plan for six stations. Six at headquarters, two at Woods Hole, two at north, two at west, four at east, and two at Hatchville. That brings us to a total of eighteen. And as we've discussed, it doesn't seem like a big deal, you know, just sixteen to eighteen firefighters, but when you roll that across thirty, three hundred and sixty-five day year, and you account for all forms of leave, it ends up being a lot of, a lot of personnel. But let me, let me pause here and ask the chief to talk a little bit more about why this is not a robust staffing level for six stations.
Thank you. And, you know, just to ensure the mic over towards.
Good stuff. But, you know, before I started, I just wanted to thank Peter for all of his, you know, patience with trying to go over all of the things that make up our department and how we manage things, how we're using, utilizing our resources, and trying to maintain a lot of what we've been discussing over the last few years. And, and I feel that having the opportunity to speak to Peter over the last several weeks and last, and throughout this, you know, since 2020, it's, it's greatly improved his understanding of, you know, our operations in order to present that, you know, in a, in a good package to everyone here. But with regards to what we're looking at here, I mean, obviously, right now, you know, our five-station model is based on a fourteen, fourteen-person minimum at the start of the shift, and then we have that option, or we go forward with utilizing overtime or regular shift strength to maintain the sixteen, which allows for the West Falmouth Station to be staffed. Looking ahead, and, and the town manager is correct, when we're looking at, you know, the bare-bones side of things, having two personnel at, at the Hatchville Station will allow us to staff that station, but the, you know, the placement of apparatus there is going to include an engine and an ambulance. So having two personnel there at the start of the shift allows for one or the other based on whatever the incident is. So looking, looking ahead with where we are with our personnel currently, you know, having eighteen at the start of the day is going to only allow for those, for three of those, or four stations to just have the minimum staffing level, which is what everybody's familiar with, is that we can't, no less than two more, you know, two personnel need to be, you know, staffing any of our apparatus when it goes out the door. So that is the minimum. At headquarters, we need, we need the six because of the amount of activity that we do, but it also is, is necessary because we have a ladder truck there, too, that is a specialized piece of equipment. And currently, we cross-staff to, for that piece of apparatus. So if everybody's at that station and a fire came in, a structure fire, then all our personnel morph over to the, to the, to the fire apparatus. But if the ambulance is out, that leaves only four personnel in the station, then the ladder truck is unmanned. And, you know, that is, you know, you know, isn't optimal for us. So as town manager pointed out, this is the bare-bones side of things, and will require eighteen with the Hatchville Station just as a minimum. And, you know, and I think he's been able to, you know, show that and, you know, to everyone understand a little more.
Can you tell us what your optimal numbers would be?
So, you know, looking ahead, I mean, we have, you know, the, you know, where we, where we'd like to be based on the Hatchville Station in the Northwest, and that would be that we'd need twenty at the start of the day, just to make that work. And when we look at those numbers, when we look at the East Falmouth, you know, Hatchville Station and the Northwest Combined Station, I have four personnel that are there, and that provides something that's been working in the East Falmouth Station since 2020, and that is that we've added two additional personnel to that station. We have an officer that's assigned there with three firefighters, and that allows the, you know, the improved response in that particular district because of the activity. So having four personnel in that station allows for us to either do either a fire call with four personnel, or if there's a medical call, then two personnel go out on the ambulance, and there's two personnel that remain in the station that can respond in the, the engine for subsequent calls, which is very frequent. So having this, what we consider a company-level staffing model is where we'd like to be. And looking ahead, you know, with increased staffing, we start to improve safety for our personnel, additional responses that are in those particular districts. And when we look at just being at that eighteen staffing level in the center, each of those stations, if they go out, don't have anybody there to, to respond to subsequent calls.
Thank you.
Let me, I just want to pause there and, and open up for questions. I have, I have some more slides to get to, but I didn't want to rush over this because this is, you know, kind of the launching point for where we're going.
Well, what does the, when you look at the total number of staff at seventy-eight, but the effective number is sixty-five because of attrition, what does the sixty-five allow us to staff?
So you're, yeah, you're, you're jumping ahead, which is, which is fine. If there are no questions on this slide, I'm happy to go there. I didn't know if there were any other questions about these staffing numbers for the, you know, the five and six-station models.
No, I just would make a comment that, you know, this sort of tells us to have functional stations. This is the kind of staffing that we need. Because understanding that, you know, one station may get called out for service, and that immediately leaves it understaffed and requires, you know, support from other stations. And I think that dynamic nature is lost on an awful lot of people. It's just, it is a system, and you just need to think about how to staff the various pieces of that system to give the best overall response to the town.
And, and I appreciate that, you know, that overview from you, Sam, because it is something that occurs on a daily basis. We, we're very active. We've been, you know, our responses every day, our, we have at least thirty to thirty-three calls per day throughout the town, and our vehicles, our apparatus, personnel are, you know, are going into districts to support the, the incidents in that area. So if the ambulance is out in that particular area, then it has to come from somewhere else. So the fire apparatus has to come from somewhere else. So all day long, we're, we're, we're making, we're making do, and it's, it's not, it's not preferred, but we're, we're managing it. But it, it is good to point out that, you know, the, the amount of calls that we have and the call volume is definitely impacts our, you know, our activity throughout the day.
I have a question.
Absolutely.
You've been on the, the department for a long time, chief. When was the last time it wasn't like this?
What do you mean, like staffing issues and when there's a fire and you're without, and you have to cover stations? When was the last time it wasn't like this? And is that part of, unfortunately, part of the job? I mean, you've got multiple fires. I mean, you're short-staffed. Correct.
Simple question is, when was it not, is there an example of when it wasn't like that?
Oh, well, prior to 2020, we, you know, we still had, back in 2019, we had a one, one-man station. And prior to that, we had other stations that were one-man.
So was it wor- that was worse?
Much, much worse.
Well, I'm asking, when was it better? When was it not worse? When was it not like this?
I would say when the staffing changed in 2020, and we went from a ten to a fourteen-man minimum, things greatly improved for our responses.
So if we, if we increased again, it would greatly improve?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Thank you.
So this is going now to where Doug was taking us, and this is a slide I think the Select Board has seen before. We're looking at the, this is a snapshot of July one of this year. We have seventy-eight budget firefighter lieutenant captain positions that count toward shift strength, of which four are new, as we just talked about for this fiscal year. So they are vacant because they're new, newly authorized, newly budgeted positions. We have two vacancies in addition to that, that are due to one retirement and one resignation. We have two individuals who have been hired that are not fully trained and not yet counting toward shift strength. As of July first, there were four out on a long-term medical leave, and there was one firefighter out on a military leave. So we start with seventy-eight budgeted firefighter positions, but after we account for the vacancies and the leave situations, long-term leave only, we're down to sixty-five department-wide. Dividing that out by the four shifts that are required to staff the three hundred and sixty-five days of the year, that comes out to an average of sixteen-point-two-five firefighters that are assigned to a shift every day. But then there are further deductions from that because, like any other department, there's vacancy, there, there is vacation time, personal time, and there is sick leave that has to be covered. On any given day, you know, maybe there are none of those. Most days, there's at least one person who's out on some form of vacation, personal or sick leave. So what that has meant in terms of, you know, in the recent months, and we, I went over some of those figures in the last presentation, that we're doing better at getting to sixteen firefighters at the start of shift. Going back to May, we've been at about eighty-five percent of the shifts. We've reached sixteen firefighters with overtime, not, you know, not coming from, you know, not eighty-five percent of the time, no one's on leave, but with, with overtime, whether that be, you know, mandatory to get to fourteen, that's our current contractual minimum staffing level under the union contract. But more, more commonly, it's voluntary overtime to get above fourteen at the start of shift to sixteen. And one benchmark in terms of cost that I think is helpful to keep in mind as we look forward is the overtime cost for the last fiscal year was one-point-three million. And we've had, we have had some new additional staff come on board through that fiscal year, 2022. So it's, unfortunately, it's very difficult to forecast overtime with precision because there are so many variables in terms of the number of, of staff that are in the department, the number of staff that are out on leave, et cetera. And what, sorry, one more thing I did want to just mention before I move on in terms of overtime. The department has been running, actually FY21, we spent a million-six, one-point-six million in overtime. That was when the minimum shifts went from ten to fourteen, and the new hires hadn't yet, were not yet fully hired, trained, and available for shift, shift strength. So there was a spike in overtime in FY21. And before that, if you look at FY20, FY19, we were running at about a million dollars per year for overtime.
Has it, since COVID slowdown, has responses slowed down with respect to at least that?
So because of, you know, COVID-related responses?
Yeah, I'm talking about trips.
Well, I think just.
Isn't that a variable?
It, it was, it, it really didn't, you know, factor in. We, we went to a lot of calls where people were ill and they thought, and, you know, there was, there was more need for bringing people up to the hospital because of, you know, people, you know, becoming ill and thinking that they needed to be seen at the ER. But there was a lot of, a lot of individuals that didn't want to be going to the hospital. So other things factored into where our increases have been going of late. But we still do see COVID-related calls, but they don't impact us like the other areas that we have.
No problem. Overall, the number of calls are rising, chief. Is that fair to say?
Yeah, I'd say that, you know, we continue to see, you know, just an increase just year to year.
From a financial perspective, what's the cost per individual on overtime versus, you know, the cost of a fire? Because I know in the private world, sometimes using overtime is less expensive than hiring somebody with all the benefits that go along with it. Do you have a feel for how many, how many staff persons you could actually replace to, to avoid as much overtime? That's the question I'm asking.
Yeah, yeah. And that's a great question, Sam, an important question. And it, it's not, it sounds like it's simple math, but as you're alluding to, it's really not. You know, obviously, time and a half is fifty percent more than, than straight time, but you have to account for benefits, right? What I can reference as a, as a benchmark is when we sought an override to add the eight firefighters, we budgeted that at one-hundred-and-twenty-one-thousand dollars per firefighter on a salary of sixty-three thousand, I think it was. So that would suggest another, and that's a mix. And I want to take a deeper dive into that as we look at if we're going to be adding budgeted positions. I want to, I want to revisit those estimates and look at how much we really need to budget for each firefighter. So I don't want to give you a definitive answer on it, but you're absolutely right that it's not simple to say, well, if we've got a million dollars in overtime, why don't we just hire, you know, as many firefighters as, as there is overtime so that we never have overtime anymore?
No, we're talking about forced overtime? Or are we talking about willingness to perform overtime hours? Because there's a difference, right?
There's a huge difference. Yeah.
Okay. So what are we speaking about now?
Sam was just asking, he was just asking, I was just talking about costs irrespective of.
Just vanilla.
Because there is a, you know, there's a detriment to, to not being able to staff or forced overtime. You follow where I'm going with this?
Absolutely, yeah.
So, I mean, it's important, it's important to know the difference. And I just, I, you know, when, when you're budgeting, when you're budgeting for new firefighters, you decrease forced overtime, right? You're, you're better off reducing forced overtime is, is the point I'm trying to make. I mean, when you've got guys there that need to make their hours and fill their shift, you're kind of killing a bird, you know, two birds with one stone by doing that, correct?
Mm-hmm.
All right, just so.
Yeah, there's an employer.
I just wanted, I just wanted to understand.
Right, right. There's a, I think, you know, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but, you know, another way that I, I would look at it is even if there were efficiencies in more overtime versus more firefighters, there's a point at which too much forced overtime is simply not operationally acceptable.
Exactly. For a host of reasons.
For employee relations, employee relations, employee health.
But that's still not an excuse to not strive for coverage. I mean, so you, you get to a tipping point where it becomes counterproductive. I get it.
Yeah, yeah.
The need is still there, always.
Yep.
I would like to see our overtime kind of cut in half. I think that would be a little more sustainable in the long term. I'd like to have enough staff that we don't have mandatory holdovers.
I bet he would, too.
Yeah.
My staff would.
Those may be different, those may be different questions, and we're going to, we're in, we're going to be talking in executive session soon. I'm going to update you on the collective bargaining that is underway in terms of increasing minimum shift staffing for right now. And I, I think, you know, part of that is an overtime conversation. So, so this is a good segue to, you know, talking about how many, how many firefighters do we need to add in order to be able to meet the Select Board's voted policy goal to staff six stations, which again is the, going from what is now a policy goal of sixteen start-of-shift to a policy goal of eighteen start-of-shift. And because of this mix of, you know, how much overtime is acceptable and, and how much is not, I, I'm just using two examples to illustrate. The first example is, well, what if we just add three positions to the budget and we take an incremental approach to increasing staffing levels? That would take us from the seventy-eight budgeted positions that we have now to eighty-one. And as we forecast, so now, you know, we looked at the actual, you know, these were the actual July one numbers in terms of vacancies and medical leave, military leave, et cetera. Now we're doing that same analysis, but it's a forecast. These aren't actual figures, these are estimates. So how many vacancies are we going to have next year, the year after that, the year after that? As I've, as Tim and I have, you know, looked at the history and looked at what's been routinely happening in terms of retirements and resignations, it's unrealistic to think we're going to have any year with no retirements or resignations. The, the department is large enough that we're probably going to have close to three every year. You know, it might be two some years, it might be four some years. But that's our best guess as to what we should expect.
And you're going to have three or four in training almost at all times because it looks like we're going to have to keep adding three or four per year.
Yeah, so this, right, so this may be, to some extent, optimistic, Doug, because I'm, you know, this three is accounting for their loss to shift strength, whether it's because they just retired or their replacement is still in training, still in fire academy.
I think for the next three or four years, we're going to have to, at least three years, we're going to have to keep three in training, not available for shift strength.
If you can get them, though, if you can get qualified applicants in the queue.
That's a different problem.
Right. Right.
Let's finish going through this before we-
So, medical leave, you know, we have a lot of history on that, and not that it's stable and doesn't change, but our best, best guess in terms of looking ahead is that at any given time, there are about two out on a long-term medical leave. And military leave has become more common, so that's, we have an allowance of one person typically out on a medical leave. So that would take our 81 budgeted positions down to 75, dividing that out by the four shifts gets us to 18.75 per shift. And then an allowance for vacation, personal, and sick, again, zero, zero to five. And the, you know, the question under option one, to, you know, to Scott's point, is that number sustainable and sufficient? Is there, is that going, if we want to get to 18 every single day, is that enough firefighters?
No.
And I, I question whether it is.
I agree. Which leads us to say, should we slow down a little bit on the construction of the Hatchville Station? For two reasons. Construction costs are still high, but coming down steadily. And also, it just seemed kind of unusual to have a station built, but not be able to really fully staff it. And then to be shortchanging all the stations, just because we built a new one that we weren't quite ready to staff. I just feel like we maybe should slow down before we issue the contract for construction.
Can I ask us to just pause on that thought? Because I do see that there is a note about the Hatchville Station completion later on in the presentation.
Okay.
Come back to that?
Yep.
Okay. So another, another scenario that I've offered here is hiring 14 firefighters. That's a big number. That's a big budget impact. That's not a number that you can add without either cutting the budget in another department or having an override. So I, I don't arrive at that number willy-nilly, but I acknowledge it's, there isn't a magic, precise, correct number. Obviously, adding 14 firefighters would put us in a much better position to get to that 18 firefighters at the start of shift on a consistent basis. Whether it's enough to guarantee that we get there every single day, I can't tell you that. I can't tell you that right now. And partly, it's a, it's a union negotiation issue, again, right? So that would, in order for me or the fire chief to be able to say, yes, we will have 18 at the start of every shift, we need at a minimum to have a contractual change that says the chief can hold over firefighters to work overtime shifts to get to that 18. Now, again, even with that, you know, there could be a point where the chief might have the authority and, but if we're, you know, and let me just give a ridiculous example to illustrate the point. If the chief was looking at 20 days in a row where he was holding over eight firefighters every day, that's completely unsustainable. We can't do that. So it, you know, these things need to go together. We need to have enough staff to reasonably increase the contractual minimum start of shift. And, you know, we're in discussions with the union now about going from 14 to 16. And I think we're, you know, we're within the range of, of being reasonable, given current budgets and current staffing, to go from 14 to 16. We're going to need more staff to get to 18. You know, I guess I'd just touch on quickly, caveats. These, we have limited data, and the variables are too many to be able to predict with precision exactly how many people we're going to have every day and, and how, what the overtime cost is going to be. So I just, you know, again, need to emphasize that these are forecasts and estimates based on the best information available that we have, and my working closely with the chief and his staff. This, you know, this isn't, this isn't me. I'm not the fire expert doing this, you know, by myself in my office. This is very much a team approach, and I'm reliant on the expertise and the data that the fire department is making available. You know, I think it's, it's obvious, but I'll say it, that in order to get to, even with 14 additional firefighters, if that's the direction the board chooses to go, there will be substantial overtime required to ensure 18 firefighters. And it may go up and not down, because, you know, we're going from, you know, 14 with an option to get to 16 to 14 mandatory to get to 18. I don't know that that overtime budget's going to go down. I think it's going to go up, unless we hire perhaps, you know, we, we, I think we'd need to hire more than 14 firefighters if we wanted to get that overtime number to go down.
I'm just thinking in the long term, I don't think we want to be a million or a million and a half a year in overtime, because it just shows that we don't have enough staff.
If you increase housing and infrastructure, then you have to increase services.
Right.
So that, you can't have it both ways.
I'm saying we'll have to, eventually, we have to staff enough that we don't rely so much on the overtime.
And if, and if, if there was, if there was a, if there was a plethora of, of people to be able to do that with, it would be an easier decision to make. But there are so many factors of the unknown that the fact that he's waiting on people now, for whatever the reason is, to not to get into the weeds about that, how can you plan for something here, here, and here, when you know you can't sustain it here yet? So it all remains conceptual. And you're right. Is there a question about the, the new fire station? I'm sure it's in everybody's mind. But until you fix the inert issue at the bottom, you can't correct any of the other ones. You don't have enough data on the bottom or sustainability personnel-wise to make those bigger decisions. I, I just, unless I'm missing something, we talk about all these grand, you know, accomplishments, but we still don't have enough people to fill the positions, whether, and then you're right, you're forcing them to do overtime, which is keeping people from coming here. So it's like the chicken and the egg. We need to find a way to staff so he's comfortable with the amount of people in, in, in the department to cover the services.
That's exactly what I'm saying.
It is. But then we talk about, we talk about housing and all of this, that, that exacerbates his problem. I mean, isn't that the real issue, trying to get people? I'm sure the people of Falmouth, at least me as a taxpayer, can understand the town is growing, the infrastructure is growing, we may need to spend more money on staffing. I, that's a black and white issue. I'll spend, I'll let my taxes, I'll vote for that because I understand that everything's growing.
Right. Well, we just need to identify what the correct number is, which is what we're doing here today, and start projecting and planning for it. Because, like you said, the problem's not going to go away. The town's going to continue to grow. We've got big plans to build, big housing developments, and we're hoping that young people can be able to come back here instead of leaving like my own daughter had to do, because it's cheaper to live in Virginia.
Or not made to begin with.
Yeah, right.
Right.
And once people leave here, they just can't get back. Because you sell your house here and you buy in South Carolina, now you're in a whole different economy. And to get back here-
Financially, all of it.
To get back here is impossible.
Yep.
Back to you, Peter?
Timeline. So we would need, if we're to budget these new positions for fiscal year 24, then that means the proposal would be going to town meeting this April, in the spring, for the annual budget, the annual town meeting. And it, the current state of affairs with the fire academy and the labor market is that, and again, this is, this is estimating forecast, this is, we don't, we don't have full control over the variables, but it's, we're estimating it's going to take about 18 months to hire and train and have a firefighter available to work shift strength. So even if they are in, you know, even if these positions are budgeted in this upcoming April for fiscal year 24, they're not going to be here and ready to work for another 18 months after that.
Quick question. Does this have, does this timeline have anything to do with or without civil service?
So right now, we're in civil service. We will have on a town meeting article, I'll be asking the board to consider an article to exit, to remove the fire department from civil service. As you know, that is, has been bargained with the union. So the union is, is, has agreed to that. But we're still waiting on the legislature to act on removal from the police department. So this assumes we're still in civil service.
Do we have any idea of if that number, if this 18 months would be decreased if we were out of civil service?
Well, you know, just knowing how the hiring is done in other municipalities on the Cape, they have different approaches that, because the only two departments on the Cape is Bourne and Falmouth that are in civil service. And we, you know, there's a lot of delays involved with that. But other ones have a different, different hiring processes. And we'd have to look at different vendors and how that, how that process is, is formatted, how we, you know, how we can put together a list on our own and, you know, and then have, have a pool of applicants. It's probably, it'd be probably more advantageous in, you know, going forward, because civil service is just, it's just a list. People take an exam, they score well, they're either a paramedic or an EMT, and then we just get the list based on scores, or veterans preference, or residency. And that's how we derive applicants right now. And it's very tedious, very tedious. But you would think that if we had our own hiring process, then we'd be able to, you know, improve things.
I mean, at a minimum, there are delays we can avoid by exiting civil service. We don't have to wait for their cycle for exams. We schedule our exams exactly when, you know, when we want to. We don't have to wait months and months for them to score the exams. They're available the next day. So there's no question it would be more efficient. Now, does that, does that guarantee that we'll have enough applicants? No.
Actually, can I piggyback on one before you?
Absolutely.
If, if we're the only two on, on the Cape, then the legislature should know, I mean, what's, what's the holdup with our request? If the legislature, if we're the only two on the Cape, what's the, what are we doing wrong?
Well, you'd, you'd have to ask, you'd have to ask the Speaker of the House.
No, no, listen, I understand, but it's not a brand new premise that hasn't been presented to them.
Your point's well taken. I do have a little bit of information, which is to say that there are over a dozen other communities that also approved special legislation to exit civil service. They were held for a long time in committee, and they're, I believe they've now been released, I can't remember if they're in third reading or if it's with the, the Speaker of the House. But essentially, what I understand from David Figuera is that they do not have the Speaker of the House's approval to move forward on those, especially, on, on those 13, whatever number of communities to exit civil service. And why, you know, why that is, it's, in, to some extent, I'm, I'm talking about the police department. So I don't know, maybe the fire department will go more quickly, because in the police department case, it's entangled with police reform and police officer certification. And, you know, whether there's some, that's what, that's what I, that's what I gathered from it. I don't think that makes any sense.
And my confusion came with, there were so many other communities that have come out of it. You know, it's not a brand new idea that they have to reinvent the wheel on.
Some of them, but-
I think there's a concern that the structure that replaces civil service might not be fine tuned enough to safeguard the-
Geographically, to us.
Well, not all towns, not all towns have the same exit strategy or the same level of planning in place. So they can't just arbitrarily approve the 13. They have to review each situation and make sure that the substitute plan provides enough structure.
That's why I asked, how, how specific it is to what we're doing.
Yeah, I don't think-
What the resistance is, or the timeline.
Right.
Or legislation.
I don't think it's geographic at all. And in some cases, Scott, like Yarmouth was never in civil service to begin with.
Right.
So they didn't have to get state approval to get out of it.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think we can continue.
Sorry about that.
No, no, you're good.
Can, can I ask a question about, I'd like to know how we could consider the SAFER Grant program? Because we all know that 2025 is a significant debt drop-off. It's the beginning of a cliff of drop-off of debt. And as long as we don't come up with billion-dollar projects, we have some opportunities to budget. And I wonder how the SAFER Grant might help us over the next three years to where that, by the time we have to budget it and fill it in, that we're a little more flexible.
I do see, again, the next slide is about estimated costs. So I've, I've made a note there to-
I just can't wait.
I'm glad you're excited. But we, we will get to that on the next one.
All right. So just, you know, again, to, to finish up the, the timing conver- conversation. So we have, in terms of the construction of the Hatchville Station, you know, Doug, I know you're keenly aware, and Scott, you're probably familiar with construction schedules as well. You, we, we don't, we can't predict the size of this magnitude. We can't predict exactly when it's going to be completed. Realistically, it could be completed sometime in 2024 or possibly 2025. So just, you know, as context for budgeting decisions and when do we want to add firefighters, if we, you know, if we add them at the, the very next budget, then they're going to come online probably sometime in the first quarter of 2025, you know, around the same time, maybe a little after the station is completed. So it's sort of, you know, it, it does relate to Doug's question about the SAFER Grant, which we'll get into. We can certainly hire staff in a phased way to mitigate the, you know, the cost and the override impact of that. But if the goal is to staff the station the day the station is ready to be operated, you know, then that would speak to some urgency in terms of putting a number of positions on the, on the budget at the upcoming town meeting. I just-
To Doug's suggestion about delaying the construction, what percentage of the construction cost is actually materials and what percentage is labor cost?
In municipal construction, the labor cost is higher.
Yeah. But I'm saying, as a percentage of the total cost of that particular project?
Well, I haven't broken that down, but maybe the building committee has. I'm sure it's, on the budget, we could figure it out.
Yeah. But I suspected it's labor, by, like, it's probably 75% of the cost of construction is labor. That's not going to go down. That's going to go up. So your argument, I think, is, is probably a little off the mark. Because if you look at the cost of construction, I mean, just historically, the cost of construction goes up every year, and it's not necessarily materials cost. It's just the cost of labor that goes along with it.
I just picture the people living in Hatchville driving by an unmanned station and saying, what were they thinking?
The same thing that the people are saying when they drive by West Falmouth.
Exactly. So do we want to repeat that?
You know what the argument is and what the, what the concern is.
Well, if I'm, if I'm understanding what's on the previous slide, the timeline is if, if we collectively decide we want to hire more firefighters, whether it's three or 14 or somewhere in between, if we do that by April 2023 town meeting for the fiscal year, July 1, 2023, 18 months from then, they would start, assuming that we hire all of these people at the same time, they would start beginning of 2025. We anticipate, based on the current timeline we have, that the Hatchville Station would be completed late 2024, beginning of 2025. So that, to me, sounds like if we come up with a plan, which we need to, by April 2023, then we'll be in a potentially good position, depending on what we decide to do for that town meeting, by 2025. We may have a station that is unoperational, if that's what we decide to do, for a few months. But if we delay on hiring new firefighters and we keep with the same schedule for the Hatchville Station, it's going to be longer that that station does not have firefighters.
I don't see how we can really talk about the timelines effectively without talking about the SAFER Grant program. I know it's later in the agenda, but-
Well, no, I think this is, this is the exact right time.
But was my general, clearly, that makes sense. That's correct. Okay.
Yes.
Please continue.
Yes. So the SAFER Grant, I think I mentioned it at the last report. We, Tim, Jennifer Mullen and I did have a call with an officer at the federal agency FEMA, I guess it is, that administers the SAFER Grant. There is not a round open at this moment, so we can't apply right now. And she was not able to tell us exactly when the next round will be. But we can tell you that it won't be, it won't be in time to hire someone on this timeline. So it's, it is, I am, and I just want to be very clear, I am not philosophically opposed to the SAFER Grant, to using the SAFER Grant. It has to be, it has to be done in the right way. Can we hire 14 firefighters on a SAFER Grant? I think that, I don't think that's a good idea at all. And I don't think that's what you were suggesting. The, the way to appropriately use the SAFER Grant, because of the, the way our Prop 2 and a half levy limit rules are structured, we have to- and a half levy limit rules are structured, we have to use, we, we have to hire a number that we are confident we can fit into the budget without an override three years later.
Right.
And one of the unknowns, actually, the, the structure, the SAFER Grant itself changes over time. So at one point, it was in year one, they pay a hundred percent of the costs, in year two, seventy-five percent, in year three, fifty percent. More recently, it was three years at a hundred percent. What will the next round be? We don't know. We don't know. But, so again, we can, we can use the SAFER Grant, certainly not opposed to it, but it has to be a modest number that we know we can fit into the budget without an override, looking ahead three years when the grant funds run out.
And that is a bigger reason why I would say we should hold off on the fires, the new fire station. And about the labor costs going up and all, we're in a high priced bidding environment right now. Ultimately, the contractor is going to be responsible for whatever that labor cost is, but he's going to project that cost and put it in his bid. And when bidding gets more competitive, and I'm just predicting that I think that the economy is going to slow down and I think that the bidding environment is going to get more competitive. Right now, contractors are so busy, sometimes they don't even respond to bids because they're already overbooked. So that is going to affect the price of the construction more than what.
Force change orders and, and forced amendments to, to contracts because of pricing increases, right? That's what you're going to face going forward if that happens.
Well, I'm saying that, give another year for the economy to realign and stabilize, we'll know more predicably what costs are, and I think we'll have a better bidding environment. So I think there's multiple reasons to consider just delaying this project, maybe it's a year. Give us a chance to find out what the SAFER Grant opportunities are, fold them into a long range budget that's planned, rather than just urgently feeling like we need to hire fourteen firefighters and hope that we get them in place in time. Personally, I don't think that the timeline works, even if we go to Springtown meeting and ask for it. I don't think they're going to be ready in time if we keep going with this construction. And I just feel like that's going to be a unfortunate situation where people driving by an unmanned, brand new station, it's just everyone's going to be like, here we go again, you know?
We don't live in a world anymore with respect to contracting where people will lock their prices and then hold them anymore, where you used to be able to say, we've got a project three years down the road.
Because it's so volatile.
They just, they're unwilling and afraid to do that. So it's just, it's, it's, it's evaporated out of the industry, Peter. People, and because everybody's along that same way of thinking business wise, there's, there's unity in it. So it's not like you can go to a guy that will do it because nobody's doing it anymore because of the safety aspect of it financially.
And it's not a good in time, it's not a good time to even do construction, honestly. It's just a crazy situation where in the middle of a job, tile that's already ordered, that's already confirmed, all of a sudden it's not available. A tub is not available. Things that are already planned, that are already in place, that we already know, it's already committed and guaranteed, sorry, that's not going to happen and just.
That's the way it is. That's what their excuse, that's how it is.
That the unpredictability and the burnout factor of the suppliers, they're just putting their hands up and just kind of like what the trash guy did. It just, we don't care anymore. It's just, who cares? Forget it.
So I think. Think there's another aspect to this. How about all of those residents that live out beyond Hatchville, up in the Schuman Valley that have been without cert, you know, a good response time from their services?
I certainly.
For as long as we can think.
Yep.
Now you're going to tell them, all right, here's another, you're, you're speculating about a lot of this stuff.
No, I'm not.
And nobody knows. Yes, yes, you are. I mean, you're talking about cost of materials.
I'm talking about the current environment.
The current environment.
Right.
But then you're saying, well, we should delay because it'll get better three years out or four. I'm, I'm saying that's not something I want to bet on.
Okay.
And I don't think we should be betting on it for the sake of those citizens that live out in that area.
And I'm not saying three or four years.
Been deprived for a long time. It's an equity issue.
I'm not saying three or four years. I think if we took a one year break on construction, I think we'd have a lot better handle on both our staffing capability, our budgeting, and also the construction environment, I hope will stabilize. It's getting better already. It's getting better instead of worse, so I think it's on the right trend.
Sam, what about phasing?
Well, what about the cost of energy? You can predict that a year from now?
No.
Because that's going to affect the cost as well.
It's coming down. We're in the right direction.
Because it's been manipulated down, right? But that's not to say that it's not going to get tighter because I think all the predictions suggest that it will get tighter. You've got, Europe out there now competing for natural gas. There's a lot of dynamics that are going on. I think you're, you're, you're betting on the coming.
I'm not, I'm just saying.
I'm not saying, I, I don't think that's a good.
I'm just saying those are more accentuating factors that lead to that suggestion.
And I don't think.
The staffing is the number one.
So I think as we're looking, as Dr. Taylor, Peter and I work on some sort of template for us to prepare for our next strategic planning session, where we want to start to drill down into the action steps, these are the kinds of things that we want to put in there, is if we're considering, what is our priority? If our priority is safety, and that means enough firefighters, does that mean we do an override? Does that mean we add things into the budget? Does that mean we delay the construction costs and why we think we want to do that? And I think so it's important that some of these ideas that you guys are bringing up concerns about the potential delaying or not delaying should be in what we discuss as we're looking at our priorities and, and especially our funding of these priorities.
Even if there is an opportunity to, to engage with contractors that are willing to hold their pricing, you know, stipulate in their contracts that they'll hold pricing to a certain percentage, at least to be able to, to not get shock, sticker shock as you're three quarters of the way done with the project, maybe. I find myself in a, in a conflicted position when I think about this because I agree with both of them. When, when is it not a good time to have more fire protection? But who wants to get fleeced doing it?
But it starts with the staffing. That's my biggest thing. It's not the construction cost or projection or predictions about the future. I'm saying that we're not going to be ready with the staffing. Personally, I just don't see it shaping up. And I'd also like to take an opportunity to explore the SAFER Grant and fold it into the budget later instead of just going full steam ahead. And if we try for an override for more firefighters, then how are we going to get an override for additional town services beyond that? I think maybe they should be folded together and say, this is what it really costs to run this town and put it in a comprehensive package and not individual overrides here and there. Because voters are going to run out of patience with that. They're going to say, what's next? What are you going to do next year? You know? I don't think we should just piecemeal it.
What if, what if, and I don't know the procedure for this, but what if we continued to, even if we oversat-staffed a little bit if we could?
That's what I want to do.
In the meantime, with rejection of this, so we had trained staff already, it would reduce, it would reduce overtime, we'd be overstuffed if we could, and continue with the project. So we had trained personnel to be able to facilitate the building. I think it's an understandable premise for the, for the, the tax paying public to understand. You've got this. We're a little over manned here, but it's going to catch up here.
That's the way we should do it.
And I don't know how to do that. I mean, I am just conceptualizing this, but it's an easier premise for people to accept financially. And it, and it, it adds credence to the bigger picture because you're, you're preparing yourself now for that. If we overstaff now, given the restraints that you've already talked about with, with retirements, all of that, you can never have enough. And it gives you plausible deniability, maybe that's a bad way to put it, but I'd rather have more firefighters here with a project that we need to staff. It gives people reason to believe in the, in the process.
Yeah.
And bring down your overhead costs.
And you could always, if something ever happened to that station and it didn't, just attrition itself would balance it back out within that three year period. Does that even make any sense?
Yes.
Because it's, it's flying in my head right now as I listen to everybody talk. There may be a simpler solution to this and a more acceptable explanation of how we're doing this now and why, with a future benefit to it. The minute that opens, you have staff that are already trained. I just don't know how to get there, Peter.
Yeah, so help me, help me understand, I, I'm not, I, I understand sort of the general concept, but, but more specifically, are you talking about overstaffing to the point beyond?
If you're talking about an override or you're going to the public.
Yeah.
With an explanation, we need X amount.
Yeah.
We need X amount. We may be overstaffed, but given the fact that we have retirement, sick leave, this and that, we can also reduce our overtime by overstaffing now with a three year plan to, when you, when you hit the ground and they cut the ribbon on your leg, you've got vetted.
Trained.
Trained, experienced within three years or two years or even a year.
Yeah.
As the progress takes place, when the doors open, everybody's got fire staff. And that's why we took it on the chin as soon as we can, to build for the future of.
Okay, so I.
That six year plan. I mean, and, and again, if I'm wrong, tell me I'm wrong, but I can't find a hole in that unless we can't, we can't convince the public that that's in the best interest of everyone.
Well, we're going to build it within the budget.
Okay, let me, I just need to get a little bit more specific because I understand, you know, at the very high conceptual level, you're, you know, the idea of don't go forward with, you know, an override now to get to this point with the firefighters, knowing that you might need more staff later, you know?
Knowing, absolutely knowing that we're going to need.
Right.
Because you factor in the attrition rate.
Okay, so, so getting, and, and I'm not looking to pin you down, but just.
Pin me down.
Generally speaking, you're saying, well, we are saying that we don't think fourteen, fourteen is sort of, you know, we should be within striking distance of eighteen at the start of shift if we had fourteen firefighters, and we know we want to get to twenty at the start of shift. So what you're saying is rather than look for an override for fourteen fire, firefighters or, you know, some number within the budget and some override, but you're saying a much larger number of firefighters.
That's what I'm saying. Because if you're going to spend their money.
Yeah.
In three years and open the door, it, it eliminates your concerns, it eliminates his concerns, it explains to the public at large that we are setting ourselves up for success three years down the line and not opening that station and not being able to staff. And you don't have to sit here and wonder how you're going to get it staffed. At least we'll know.
So are you going back to the idea of hiring fourteen right?
I'm not going back to anything. I'd, I'd hire, if we could, I, I believe in overstaffing. If you've got an attrition rate and you've got vacation, and those are all concerns that we discuss every time we talk about this, and that's what he fights every day. He's said it a million times and he's reiterated it. Right now, we could use those. You're eliminating that one point three million dollars, that, that in and of itself is a benefit. Pardon me?
The cost of overhead.
That's exactly right. I mean, it's simple, it sounds, I mean, I may be making more convoluted than it should be, but it's simple.
I'm just trying to understand. Are you saying that we should go with Peter's suggestion of bringing fourteen?
I want more, I'd go, I'd, if we're going to ask for an override with a, with a succinct explanation of not having revisiting this conversation after you have six stations, this is the time to do it.
An end, a separate override for fourteen firefighters, is that what you're saying?
More than fourteen.
More.
More. Okay, I, I don't really.
And explain to them that that overhead and that overtime, forced overtime, part, will be partially eliminated by that while creating a, a, an experienced fire staff to field that. So he's not waiting for the next kid to come in. We already have them.
So if we, now we just had a eight person override, and now we're going to bring fourteen, sixteen, or whatever it is, and then we're going to realize maybe, we don't know yet, but we might realize that the town itself is not sustainable at its current budget because of the volume and the number of people that we're serving and the limits of Proposition Two and a Half.
Right.
Now, are we going to ask for a firefighter override this year and then are we going to ask for a town override next year? We're going to start to undermine the voter's confidence in our management.
You know what undermines the voter's confidence? Selling them a whatever that fire station's going to be and then leaving it unmanned.
Yeah.
Or then going back to them and saying, you know, we completely wrong, we can't do it now. What does that do for voter?
We're sort of doing that right now. If we go for another.
Not if we don't have a plan. This is a planning, a strategic planning session.
Well, what I'm saying is, we just did an override for eight. And now we're, now we're going back and saying.
And it didn't work.
That wasn't even close.
Right. So, so that was a misplanning or whatever.
Right.
What we're trying to do is plan for the future and plan for success, Doug. And let it be their decision if we explain it succinctly enough and the reasoning behind it, and then back our assertions that this is what we, our, your elected officials believe is going to work. So we're not revisiting this in the future and say, oh, that didn't work either, so we're going to do this. I would rather go for it now with a, with a, with a great explanation of how our success plan is going to work. Let them be the judge of that, right? And not come three years now and have the fight and have this room full of people that are dissatisfied with our judgment because we didn't plan for the future of this fire station. Because.
All I'm saying is.
You're the only one that doesn't want it right now.
I'm just saying, if we do that, that's probably going to be it for overrides for the foreseeable future.
Well, guess what? I disagree with you.
Yeah?
Because I think the difference between that is really the margin between getting rid of the overtime requirement because we have adequate staff, right? And not doing it, right?
I'm not talking about just the fire department.
I am.
Yeah, and I am too. And, and because it's public safety.
I think I understand what Doug is saying, is if we go and ask for an override now, next year, if we find we need an override for the wastewater treatment facility or something.
It's not going to pass.
So is that what you're saying?
Because people are going to say, okay, you had one last year, now you have one this year, what's next year going to be?
So the concern is that if we use an override now, we might not have the, the perceived ability to use an override again in the near future.
Right.
So that is where we need to go back to, what is our overall plan for the town?
Exactly.
What are our priorities? If our priority is wastewater, then yes, we do need to talk about that now. But if we say that our immediate priority for the next however many years is going to be safety, then we know that we need to prioritize safety.
Well, if we continue to piecemeal this with, with, with consultants and all of us and start to take, we have to dial in on specific items, fix them and move on to the next thing. Just satisfying little pieces of this is number one, just costing us money. It's circumventing the process because, and it's stretching it out. They're voting for this fire station. Let's make sure it's going to be successful. That's how I look at it.
There's another element to this. We don't have to hire all the staff immediately. So if it's looking like, you know, things are going to get thrown out, it's not going to be open for whatever reasons, right? We can delay hiring that staff. And it goes into certified free cash and it gets invested in offsetting the capital cost.
Takes the pressure off the chief and, and that department. I, I, I don't know how, if it's explained correctly and with integrity, that they don't make the right decision.
I agree with you. It probably would pass because public safety and, you know, people are going to support that. All I'm saying is, that will be the last override for quite some time.
I disagree.
Okay, that's just my.
Well, if it was, so be it.
Right, well.
But we have one, one serious issue fixed to the end, to its end. Then we have the six-station model, right? And we move on. If we don't get another override, then so be it. They understand why.
Again, I think that's why it comes back to what are we setting as our priorities?
You're absolutely right, and this is how I do, I'm only one person.
Yeah.
But I'm also a taxpayer.
Mm-hmm.
And I don't mind, when I go to a restaurant and I want something specific to eat, and if it comes out correct, the way I ordered it, I don't care what I pay for it. I understand that it's a greater price, but I got what I wanted, and that's what I want this town personally to experience for a change. This is what we told you, this is what it's going to cost. It may, it may out you, but this is what you get in the end, what we told you it was going to be. They deserve that.
Yeah, certainly, absolutely right. But, one, I don't think that the timeline works, even if we ask for an override and get it, I still don't think we're going to be ready for that station to open. And, two, I think we've got bigger needs that should be encompassed all in an override that is really comprehensive, not piecemealing it. I think piecemealing an override is just, I think it's just...
I think that's what I just said.
You want to do the fire station separately now with an override.
Okay.
I think it should be folded together.
I want to staff the fire department.
Yeah.
Is what I want to do, setting ourselves up.
Your top priority is safety, is what I'm...
Public safety?
Public safety is what I'm hearing. I'm not saying that that's not your top priority.
It has been, the whole time I've been here.
You're looking at this town, I see what you're saying, you're looking at this town ride, when you're talking about piecemeal, you guys are talking about two different things. You're talking about piecemeal within the fire department, you're talking about piecemeal within the whole town.
Right.
Exactly.
That's exactly right.
Okay, so we're clear that we're not talking about the same piecemeal?
Right.
Okay.
And for me...
And now we have peace.
For me, I would say, I would say that if we could hold off for one year, is all I'm saying, I think would give us a chance to catch up, whether it's with an override or getting into the SAFER program and budgeting down the road for the staffing. I just think that no matter how you slice it, we are not going to be ready to staff that station if we put it out to bid in the fall. And I don't think it's practical to expect to put a bid out and say, give us a price, but we probably won't build now, because it's not going to be a real number that can be relied upon. Contractors are more programmed to, once you say, once you say go...
Doug, I do it every day, I spent a million dollars last week.
I'm just saying, once you turn a contractor loose, they go.
That's right.
They don't slow down and take it slow.
And that's where contract management and contract negotiations become so important, and finding people that really want to do work for municipality and not just some hacks that are going to do that to you. That's where we have to dial in and get more specific on what we're paying for. And if that's the case, then you have your argument, but I think they're still out there, and there's still people that are wanting to work for municipalities and make their name in the industry and be able to do that. You should be able at a contract negotiation to look at somebody and get them to commit to something, or move on to another contractor.
Okay, I want to be respectful of the time.
Thank you.
Sorry.
No, that's okay.
I do have to go because I've got a 12 o'clock appointment.
Hey.
I'm sorry.
So I just want to, very briefly on this topic, say two things. One, that if the board is going to seriously entertain delaying the construction, you know, we need to have a dialogue with the building committee, I believe, and we also need to work closely with our legal counsel, because we do have contracts in place with our architect and our OPM, and I don't know if, you know, depending on the length of the delay, if it's a full year or more, there could be liability there that we would need to be mindful of before the board votes any action.
Financial liability.
Yes.
Because they got project oversight.
Right, and we have a contract with them to do that work, and there's a timeline for that work, right.
Okay, Peter, chief, is there anything else on these last two pages that you absolutely think we need to hear and not just read?
Just for, you know, for the, I guess for the public to see that the override costs based on FY '21 dollars, these are not updated for FY '24, $121,000 per firefighter, that's the fully loaded cost that we used last time, and using that math, if we were to put fourteen firefighters, and this is not a proposal, I'm not advocating for this, the board's going to continue to dialogue, but just as a reference point for cost impact, that's a million, 1.7 million, which amounts to 12 cents on the tax rate, a one and a half percent increase, $74.65 on the average single-family tax bill. I don't say that lightly, that tax increase of $75 is over and above the normal two and a half percent increase, so it's, you know, I take, you know, I take pride in keeping the tax rate low and delivering the best services that we can, but I just wanted to get those, that information out there for future consideration.
Good.
Thank you. And I do see a note on here, consider joint meeting with the finance committee, decision by early October. So we need, so we need to have a decision, we need to have a meeting with the finance committee and make a decision before October, so we could have something on the April 2023 town meeting warrant.
Right, we, right, so we have some time, but not a ton of time, and, you know, I certainly think before the board makes a decision about a funding plan for new firefighters, you know, I think it's appropriate to have a dialogue with the finance committee.